Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, both in person and virtually. This regularly scheduled session of the Planning Commission of the City of Annapolis shall come to order. It's June 5, 2025. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Present.
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 Okay. What I suggest is that we go through our administrative business. We have a quorum to proceed on that stuff. And if there is still to be, if they still, we still can't get them in, we'll just have to hold off on the big issue tonight, which is the zoning text amendments and so forth, oh fourteen twenty-five. So there may be an interruption, but let's get started if we can. With that in mind, on the agenda, we have approval of minutes. May 1 is prepared. May 8 is not yet prepared. We have approval of findings on the AutoZone application that was heard last time on May 1. And we have, I'd like to add, under Administrative Business, approval of the report to the Maryland Department of Planning. Very brief, we've seen the full report before. And given that the package of zoning amendments and so forth, which are quite important, we will not continue the comprehensive rezoning discussion. That'll be continued, primarily the Tyler Street redesign. So with those changes in mind, could we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion.
Mr. Cummings, second. All right. All in favor of that agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Approval of minutes, May 1, 2025. You all had a chance to see them. I cannot vote because I was not present. Any comment on them? They've been revised and recirculated.
The revisions came from Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Yes. I saw move.
Second. Mr. Cummings. All right. All in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good. Approval of findings of the AutoZone, they're particularly full and complete, and they have been circulated for a week or more. And once again, I was not present, so I will have to abstain.
I just have one comment. For the attachments, we weren't able to attach the forest conservation plan calculations originally. And so we said, we're going to approve this subject to those things being added to the, to the record. Do you know if they've been added to the record?
I don't know that.
Is Mr. Meekins here?
No.
It's just the afforestation computation, and everyone talked about it, but no one had it. So, all right, maybe we can just approve with the condition still that that information will be part of the record.
So, condition twenty-one, forest conservation
Calculations.
Calculations shall be made a part of this application, made a part of this record.
Right. Or actually, our reviewers' computations. So, forester from the city has to review the afforestation requirements, which I believe he did do and said it was fine. It's just that none of that was actually in the record, because he wasn't able to testify that.
Oh, the included in the record. Condition twenty-one reads, Forest Conservation Act computations shall be included in the record of this application.
Perfect.
With that amendment, do I hear any other comment, any other edits?
None of me.
Do I hear a motion? Moved.
I second.
And do I have the permission, the authorization to sign on behalf of the relevant commissioner?
Yes.
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 I abstain. All right. Done. And there's a report that was, a summary, actually, it's just a summary of the report that's, we've already approved. Is there any discussion about what to send to the Maryland Department of Planning? It's a very formatted report, nothing. We looked at this a couple of months ago. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of sending that along? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, we have been joined by the other two members, Mr. Riley and Mr. Pline. There he is, good soldier, Mr. Pline and Mr. Riley, present from probably some places cooler and nicer than now. So we can proceed with the public hearing on oh fourteen twenty-five, which implements, is the beginning of implementation of the Annapolis Ahead Comprehensive Plan, which has been adopted, fully adopted by not only this commission, but the city council. Mr. Lashinsky, is this your, this your project?
It's not my project, but I am here to present the legislation, just give a brief overview, so we can move into the public comments as quickly as possible. I know there are people here that came to testify. Eric Lashinsky, Chief of Comprehensive Planning, if I can get back to the presentation here. Moment. One more try. We go. Now, we're in. Okay. So, what I've prepared are some slides to help illustrate the staff report that you all have received last week, that walks through the implications of oh fourteen twenty-five. This is, this is the first piece of legislation related to the comprehensive plan that was adopted last summer. So it's pretty exciting. It's typically when, I don't know if you can hear it in my voice, but no, it's, you know, when you adopt a comprehensive plan, you have a set of goals and recommended actions and a vision for the future, and that has to be implemented by city council, and this body advises city council. So that's, that's why we're here. The comprehensive plan priorities, there's a few that I wanted to highlight that are threaded throughout the document. Housing, neighborhood preservation, inclusive economic growth, sustainable development, pedestrian bicycle and transit connectivity, lower carbon footprint, prioritize environmental assets. All of those things are embedded in this legislation, and they're things that we're looking to implement in other ways, capital budget, et cetera. This legislation is part of a comprehensive rezoning exercise. It's something that looks broadly at the city, at ways that we can improve our development regulations. And it really comes down to trying to find a consistency between the comprehensive plan, the zoning map, and the zoning code. And I just wanted to show quickly, this key exhibit on the left is the future land use map. It's hard to see, but the themes there are a very pronounced green network that has not really been evident on past future land use maps in prior comprehensive plans. That was a real priority, to show that and really be more deliberate and willful in how we protect and expand that network. And then the red areas are these areas that are identified for mixed use development, really along our major corridors, where we have opportunities to be much more efficient in the way we, we develop our limited land resources in the city. So while the city might be mostly built out, we have lots of parcels in the city that could be much better utilized to achieve a lot of different goals. And then on the right, our zoning map, we have thirty-one different zoning districts, which is a very complicated system for anybody to figure out, let alone a city planner, or elected official, or planning commissioner. So we want to really try to simplify that map over time. And so we've come up with an approach to rezoning that has four phases, and we're in phase one right now, which is taking us through the summer, and actually, probably into the fall. But there's two components of it, our Tyler Avenue Complete Community that we've been presenting on. And then the plan development text amendments is the largest piece of the legislation before you knight. There's a few other pieces that fit into that, but we're going to be moving into our other phases after the election. And that's really the constraint here. I mean, we're going to continue doing analysis for these other phases, but we really can't advance it with you all and the city council until we have a new slate of council members after November. So, oh fourteen twenty-five legislation, there's four primary components to it. As I mentioned, the plan development text amendments are a large portion. There's a text amendment related to R2NC, which is primarily Eastport. There's text amendments related to height districts in the historic district. And there's text amendments related to the C2 or C2A zoning district, which is also in the historic district, the downtown area. And then there's three amendments that we shared with you, one relating to the BR zoning district, which is business revitalization, small zone off of Clay Street and West Washington. There's a correction, a clarification related to the historic district, text amendments related to the bulk standards. And then there's a transit oriented development amendment that I know Alderman Savage is here to talk about tonight. So, plan developments, you know, this aspect of our zoning code was added in 2004. It's, and I would say instrumental in leading to the most catalytic development projects in the city since then. Many of the most significant major redevelopments, ranging from Acton's Landing to Parole Place, which you all approved in the fall, the Willows, which is under construction now. These are just a sampling of, of the plan development. Essentially, plan developments are larger projects traditionally. They're projects where there's an opportunity to do great things with a project, achieve a range of goals. And so, development teams are granted more flexibility to work with city staff to achieve those goals through the plan development provisions. They're given flexibility in terms of the uses and the way the land is apportioned, in some cases, density. But what we found over time is that the, the plan development requirements can be somewhat Byzantine in the way they're written. They're hard to parse through. They're not necessarily married well to the needs of the city today. They don't really spell out what we're looking for so articulately. And we have a new comprehensive plan, so there's an opportunity to really look at how the plan development provisions can be better articulated and really help us elicit the kind of outcomes we want. And so that's the primary intent of this portion of the ordinance. We're not changing the basic structure of the plan development requirements. There's still three types, residential planned developments, business plan developments, and special mixed plan developments. And these relate to the underlying zoning of the project's location and what they're trying to achieve in terms of the uses there. And in, in summary, what, what this bill is saying for residential plan developments, there's a unit density allowance of going over their current allowed density, up to one hundred fifty percent of those units, provided certain conditions are met for business plan developments. It's not about density, it's about the kind of uses that are allowed. And this is what we found, you know, this legislation came out of frankly, recognition that we have a number of sites in the city that are just kind of floundering. They, they're, they can't move forward. There's no, there's no real clear path to development happening with the current zoning and the plan development requirements. I'd say, one of the provisions of plan developments that makes certain sites very tricky is that you can't do certain uses that aren't allowed in the base zoning. And development teams want more flexibility to sort of create that more mixed use type project. And allowing for fifteen percent of uses that aren't allowed in the base zoning to go up to fifty percent is one provision that we think will really help advance certain projects. So, and that's really for business plan developments. And special mixed plan developments is really the, the type that would, we think, has the most potential to create great outcomes for both the nearby communities and the city as a whole. And so with that, there's both a density amendment where the unit count is based on eight hundred fifty square foot unit module of apartment, a sizable apartment type unit. And then those uses that I mentioned for business plan developments that are not normally allowed in the base zone, go from thirty percent to seventy-five percent. And based on conditions, I'm going to talk about in a second. Across all of these plan development types, you have updates to our common open space requirements. That's a foundational aspect of plan developments where projects are expected to provide park space, whether it's a playground, community space of some kind, outdoor space that residents can gather in, visitors. And that's ten or twenty percent, depending on the type. But those types of open space have not been as broadly defined until now. And then the performance standards is a really important aspect here. In the comprehensive plan, we have performance standards associated with mixed use development. And we really wanted to enact those here. And so there's a requirement that every plan development has to really achieve those performance standards. And that's a, that's a baseline for you all to be using to assess whether a project is, is approvable or not, frankly. So, you were provided a copy of those standards from the, I'm going to skip ahead because that's, this, this clip from the comprehensive plan talks about those, those performance standard categories, enhance neighborhood character, enhance public realm, compact and connected development, connected street networks, commercial and institutional uses balanced with community needs, and then green infrastructure. And there's recommendations on each of those. With the special mixed, I mean, this is, this is a key graphic to share. The special mixed plan developments, where they're given this additional density allowance and use flexibility, it's only tied to projects that meet certain conditions. One, they have to be identified as mixed use on the future land use map of the comp plan. So that's the map on the left, the red areas I was mentioning earlier. They have to be on one of, a set of corridors that are identified in the legislation. And what we've done is identify in green on the map on the right, the parcels that would qualify. I mean, they also have to be in a base zoning district that allows for special mixed plan developments. And that's something you find in the use table for the base zoning. So everything in green would qualify. And so you can see a pattern here. It's predominantly parcels along Forest Drive, West Street, Chincapin Round Road, Solomon's Island Road. These are our major transit corridors, places where we have a high level of car dependency today. That we're really trying to transition to a healthier, more balanced transportation environment, where it's safe to walk or ride a bike, and we have improved transit. And that's really what we think these types of projects could move us towards. That's, that's the, the big intent here. I should have led with that. So that's plan developments. I, I'm going to just move through the other pieces quickly now. The R2NC is a zoning district that applies exclusively to Eastport. You can see the, the portion of Eastport, more or less from Sixth Street North, is all heavily R2NC. This is a neighborhood conservation zone. Eastport, I would say, exemplifies a lot of the goals in the comprehensive plan. It's dense, it's mixed use, it has a wide variety of housing types, from single family to duplex to triplex to fourplex and beyond. We really want to advance projects in Eastport efficiently. And one of the things that we found is holding up a lot of projects is some confusion in terms, and this is something we refer to as the thirty-two fifty rule. Essentially, projects over thirty-two hundred fifty square feet require a major site plan review, and it's very complicated. It takes up a lot of time for staff. But what we found, and that's not the issue, it's that calculating that thirty-two fifty has become very confusing. And it comes down to the, the half-story clause and what that constitutes. And so this is really fundamentally just about improving the definition to eliminate as much confusion as possible, how you calculate that thirty-two fifty square feet. And we think that by doing this, we will be able to mitigate a lot of conflicts that we've been encountering and really streamline development review in this area. The historic district amendments in the legislation are primarily focused on this stretch of Dock Street, adjacent to the city dock project that you all are aware of. I'm going to jump ahead for a second and just share this map, which delineates the, the height zones within the historic district. There's three. You can see in, in orange, maximum height allowed is thirty-two feet, in green, it's thirty-eight feet, and then in magenta pink, it's forty-five feet. And I've circled the area on Dock Street that I just showed a photo of. The legislation is focused on this broadly, the height zones in one, one particular way, and that is allowing antennas and mechanical equipment of thirty inches or less above the rooftop to not count towards the height measurement. But then this particular area, which is circled here, I'll just go back to the, the elevation. In this particular area where we're connected to the sea dock, we have an opportunity to really make better use of this land in relation to the sea dock project, leverage the value of it. It's sort of a no-brainer that you would want real estate adjacent to the, the most significant civic project in the seas, history, to be commensurate with that investment. And we found is that the, the code here limits what's possible on these parcels. And with just, what I see as a very reasonable, modest change to And with just what I see as a very reasonable, modest change to allow for mechanical equipment to exceed the height limit on the rooftop and other basic, you know, needs associated with the operations of the building, you can allow for modern functioning buildings in this location to be designed in concert with the City Dock project. It's an economic development aspect to it. There's just an aspect of good city planning here. These are partially vacant buildings today, are not really performing to their best value. So in addition to that 30-inch allowance, in this location, the text amendment allows for these mechanical structures to go to 10 feet. I'm actually going to give you a sense of what this looks like. If you count four stories here, that's getting you up to the 38 feet that's currently allowed. And then above that is a 10-foot allowance for a mechanical enclosure. And above that is an additional five feet for an elevator overrun. And what we tried to show is how that would be designed in a way to minimize view impacts from the street. And that's really a condition in this legislation that's important to acknowledge that only 25% of the roof can include coverage that exceeds this height, that 38 feet. It has to be set back the best way possible. There has to be a green roof that helps address stormwater issues. And then the handrails are allowed to be at the edge, up to four feet, but have to be set back a foot for every foot in height that they are. So, you know, this is what the legislation would allow, and I think it's reasonable, given the location and the...
Mr. Chairman, I just want to weigh in on this particular image. This was done by an architect in our office, Rupa Basu. And it's really showing what would actually be visible under the full development that's possible under the provision here that we're discussing. It shows what someone would see if they were located in the middle of the City Dock Park, looking at a building that was maxed out, and what someone would see if they were standing on the promenade next to Eagle Alley, looking in the same direction. This is a cross-section, so you really never see the building this way. What's relevant here is what is, you know, projected into the view shed if someone's looking up at that particular angle. And that structure that's up the top is imagined as a kind of a service vestibule, if you had elevator coming up and an accessway coming out onto the rooftop, much in the same way as the fifth floor of the parking garage here, next to us, has a service vestibule. It's an enclosed area in glass, and you come out of the elevator and you're in a small space before you go out to the parking garage. So that's modeled on something akin to that.
But this model has terraced? And is there anything in the legislation that requires terracing?
Yes, it's the application of the height standards. The first, the first height is 28 foot to the main cornice, and then it's set back at a diagonal 45 degrees up to the maximum height of 38 feet. So the sort of the smaller piece, which looks like a fourth floor, is set at a maximum height of 38 feet, which is, you know, what the constraints are now in the code. And what you see on top of that is a cross-section as if there were this vestibule. That doesn't, that space, that volume, doesn't run the length of the rooftop, of course. It's a relatively small part of a larger roof. But this is just meant to indicate what a pedestrian might see if you look up. And you can see that what's visible under, like worst-case scenario, is really quite small.
When you say HUD standards, are those the HUD standards that apply to historic buildings in historic districts?
The height standards that are, that apply to the historic district. This is the height zone two. There are three zones, as Eric said, and this is the zone two. And again, it's 28 and 38. 28 to the cornice, the main building, and then 38 to the maximum part of the building, the ridge or very top. This is an architect's conveying an idea and an assessment. This is not what a building looks like, or what that building would necessarily look like. So we have to look at it as a very abstract representation of something. And of course, it's a cross-section, which adds to the complexity. But the main point here is her analysis, that very small part of what would be built on top of the roof would actually be visible. Certainly wouldn't be visible if you were on the right-of-way of Dock Street or on Prince George Street, just by the nature of the angle that you can conceivably see, it's just not visible.
I don't want to get into too many weeds, but to the HUD, and you may not be able to answer this, but to the HUD standards...
Height, I think he's saying height standards.
The HUD standards, HUD height standards, require a terracing from the cornice to the first 28 feet or something you said, right? And then there's another 10 feet, and it needs to be set back?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm asking, and I noticed that on the Prince George Street side, there is also a terracing. Can, do the standards, would the standards allow the entire, whatever floor that is, the fourth floor, be moved all the way back to Prince George Street and then have even a bigger terrace in the front?
No, no, it would not. And of course, this would have to, any property that would be developed under these guidelines or the existing guidelines would come to the planning commission for site design review, as well as the Historic Preservation Commission. And they would apply the guidelines that they administer.
So just one more comment. Those distances that are noted along the ground plane, 100 feet and 200 feet there, you can see from one view to the other. Okay. And we could certainly go back to anything. But this is also a text amendment related to the downtown area, and this is related to parking. Currently, in the C2 and C2A zoning districts, which are shown here in two similar shades of purple, for projects or properties under 20,000 square feet, the parking requirements are waived. Projects over that square footage have to meet the parking requirement, you know, significant parking challenge for what is essentially our densest, most walkable urban district. We found that there's not really a whole lot of sense in that, given that we're trying to advance a number of transportation goals, and this is a place that has ample amount of parking. I just, I wanted to identify two parking assets, the Hillman Garage and the Gottes Garage here, together are 1,100 parking spaces.
How many?
1,100. That's not even including all the street parking, surface lots, other parking assets like the Whitmore Garage, the Bladen Street Garage. There's a lot of parking downtown. I know, you know, we hear from time to time, people have trouble finding a parking spot, but, you know, if there's one place where I think we can encourage more transportation options, it's this place. And to sort of ask for redevelopment to accommodate a significant amount of parking is, seems to go against all of our comprehensive goals. It really wouldn't help us move the needle. So that's the intent here with this text amendment. Anything you want to add, Chris?
No, just on the next one. Can I start that, the BR one? Yeah.
We have a question.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Still cannot hear you.
So I have a question about the, about the back to the height issue, but you can't hear me. Can you hear me? My mic is on. My mic is on.
There you go. Now we can hear you.
Yeah, good. Okay. So I have a question about... So question about elevators. So the issue about the five feet for elevators, so none of the buildings there currently have elevators, is that correct? And is the idea that if any redevelopment were to happen, modern building standards are going to require elevators for ADA access? So that's the only way you can really utilize the upper floors if they, if they have that five-foot possible penetration for the mechanical equipment at the top? That's really the only way that that works? Is that the idea?
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
So did you say that ADA required?
It is ADA requirement, that we have multiple-story buildings and a public accommodation type of building, an elevator would be required. And that five, extra five foot is the override, is the overrun for an elevator. An elevator always has empty space above and beyond its last floor as a safety margin.
I have a couple of questions, starting from this part of the legislation going back. Oftentimes, we will have changes, and there'll be a project that's being thought of for a particular site. Is there anything being thought of here for that space that we're conceptualizing right now?
Yeah, it's been conceptualized as a location for a hotel for many years. And I don't see that changing.
Is there any applications currently pending?
No, not at all.
I also have a question about green roofs. Love the idea of green roofs, but I don't, I can speak from some experience, we're not good at maintaining our green roofs in the city. So I noticed in the staff report, it says that there won't be any additional time or effort involved from staff to deal with this legislation. My first question is, how would you mean, how would we enforce the green roof? We don't do it now, do we have our staff to do it?
Yeah, I would say, actually, recently, there's been a recognition that there's deferred maintenance on the green roofs the city currently has. So the Pitt Moire Rec Center and the police station have green roofs. And there was a recent request for proposals for a company to service those and basically bring them back up to being as highly functioning as they can be. And I think there's a greater recognition in public works, the stormwater division, that this is a critical component of our stormwater management infrastructure that we need to be doing a better job of maintaining. And I think they have a better sense of it now, but...
So it will, it might not impact you directly, but it'll impact somebody to enforce this, where it's possibly not being enforced right now in other areas of the city. So you don't want to do something where it's not working somewhere else and then have it not work here. So there's recommendations somewhere along the line to make sure we have adequate staff enforcement ability.
That's right.
And looking at the green roof idea, would there then be no opportunity for rooftop dining at some point?
No, I mean, I think that those things can work hand in hand. I mean, I think there's rooftop green roofs that have a programming component. I think, you know, you sort of, you want to design the roof in a way that's going to be used. Some have more intensive uses than others, but they're not mutually exclusive. We just have a couple more slides to kind of wrap this up. This is, I'm really just...
Eric might take this in. So Eric and I didn't even rehearse this. But I'm going to ask the commission not proceed with this particular amendment tonight. In part because, yeah, we wish that you could. But the reality is, is that despite our best efforts, and we spent a lot of time analyzing this particular zoning text amendment, how it would fit and making sure that we were coming up with the right numbers in terms of increasing the FAR, and we totally support it. But unlike the other amendments that address, that are presented tonight, this one doesn't address something that's existing in the draft. It's something new. It's introducing a new idea, a different part of the city, a different zone. And your public hearing was announced with regard to the main first reader. It wasn't announced with this one. So I'm going to ask, I think the wise thing to do is pull this and ask the council to adopt it or to introduce this at their next meeting later in June, and then this would come back to you. And I think that's the right process, and it would provide the opportunity for the public to be aware of what, so they know what to expect when they come to a public hearing. But this is my fault in terms of just trying to move things along and sort of caught in this closed window. And I would ask, Mr. Chairman, that you consider removing this?
The amendment being the one...
This amendment, the amendment would be our zoning district amendment. But we will have a chance to talk about it again soon, and we'll share with you our results, our analysis, and why we support it. I think it's a good idea.
Why don't you spend a minute or two explaining it?
Well, this is a very small zoning district in the city, one of the smallest. It was conceived several years ago to encourage revitalization in this section of the old Fourth Ward, near the intersection of West Washington and Clay Streets. This is where the Stanton Community Center is located. There's a number of, similar to, you know, frankly, the City Dock area, that poorly functioning buildings that have an opportunity to be revitalized. And so the amendment was focused on enabling that, really kind of encouraging development project in this area that could be a catalyst for change.
How much would, if it acted, how much more area would the new standard permit?
I don't think we really want to get into the specifics, Frank. I mean, because I think we're...
It's just a change in the floor area ratio, and we can't really boil it down to specifics until we know a lot size and the details of that. Generally, the current standards prevent a building from being built at three stories. Three stories. And the zoning allows three-story buildings, but the FAR said it too. And practically speaking, if you even, if you built in the same way, the traditional way that we want to build, the zoning prevents it. So we see this as a fix to a bottleneck that is constraining what could otherwise be a positive redevelopment.
Yeah.
And so for that reason, we want to fix it. And that's why we see it as consistent with the theme of the text amendments that are before you. But it is a specific zoning text amendment in a district that's not been contemplated like the other zoning districts. And for that reason, I urge caution.
That's it for the presentation. So promised I would be quickly.
Questions?
I have a couple of questions about adding as much density as we're potentially allowing without really getting some transit-oriented development standards in the works. How do you contemplate, what do you think that will do? Not having transit.
Right. Well, I know you're going to hear from Alderman Savage shortly about his amendment, which addresses that. But I think my perspective is that transit is one piece of our transportation landscape. It's not the only thing. We really are a very car-dependent city today. It's hard to walk places, hard to bike places. I'm often talking to people who live on Forest Drive in particular, and reminding them just how many people drive their kids to school today, where if we had safer streets, they could be walking. The people that drive just to cross Forest Drive to go to a convenience store, the number of short trips that could be reduced if we had a roadway with development that was less car-dependent. And so I think that this kind of development pattern that we're trying to encourage with this type of legislation will move us towards that. I think that the transit piece is incredibly important. I think that the transit piece is incredibly important and has to happen in parallel.
And does this legislation contemplate that?
The legislation as currently written does not include a reference to transit funding.
Was that just on purpose or was that just an oversight?
No, it's actually because the I mean, I can't say for sure what the thinking was, but the the mechanism for funding transit is complicated. And I think we've I know there's quite a lot of thinking happening right now about how to fund that, but it's it's not just a legislation issue. It's a capital budget issue. It's a there's other policy areas that could be utilized, but.
Are you worried at all that not doing it because it's complicated may lead to unforeseen circumstances in the future that we won't be able to undo?
I am not. I think that one of the bigger issues with the city in general is no matter how good our transportation, our transit system is, it's still going to be a very easy place to park a car and drive a car. And that's one of the things that I would say that's one of the reasons why people choose to not take transits, because you can drive from one end of the city to another in a short amount of time if you have a car.
I just tried to get out of Eastport in my car. Just want you to know that that's not a true statement.
Well, maybe I'm comparing it to other other places where, you know, they're just suffering from more intense gridlock. But I, you know, I think that's I've been as loud advocate as anybody on the need to design a transit system that is designed for for everybody, not just people who are most desperate to get around. It's very, very necessary, but I still believe that as long as it's easy to drive a car in the city and park a car for free everywhere, it's going to be a challenge to get people to, you know, so that's one aspect of this too. But I, you know, we we really, we want our streets to be more like boulevards, not freeways. And that's, you know, you need to have a development that's conducive to that. And that's really what this is about.
And how do you envision that working like long Forest Drive? We a lot add a lot of density along Forest Drive right now. How do you how will the traffic improve? Because we have no transit option on the table. Do you have any concept of what would?
Well, you'd certainly have, you know, potential for more people to live closer to where they might work or go to school. And, you know, you could reduce vehicle trips that way. I mean, I think it's it's really hard to anticipate sometimes what what the impacts could be, but you know, I think the the value in changing the development pattern is kind of that long term transformation of the corridor. I mean, it has to start somewhere.
I was just thinking, this is such a great opportunity to to do the transit oriented planning at the same time. It would be just like the comprehensive plan talked about, you know, trying to have a comprehensive view of how to do better development. So it feels like we're leaving a very important piece out, although I agree with everything say about adding density is important, having more walkable community. Just I'm a little unsure about how we do that without a plan for addressing transit that will alleviate some of the problems that all the presented on.
Do you want to chime in?
Yeah. To put things in perspective, while the the text amendments would allow for more density, they don't allow for a lot more density over what exists today, not in a way that's comparable or that is detrimental to traffic flow or any other issue. In fact, the increases envisioned are real, but they're not substantial. For instance, a planned development can be developed at forty three point five dwell units per acre now. And with the proposal, even under in these sort of higher density areas that we've identified, it's still only at fifty one units per acre. So we're not talking six story buildings. We're talking what the changes principally do is reduce the amount of space that must be devoted to commercial uses in mixed use projects to give a nod to the residential. This is not a plan that reimagines Forest Drive as K Street in DC. This is nothing like that at all. It's just an attempt to address the comprehensive plans recommendation to allow more housing opportunities in a number of locations. And we've identified them specifically in the plan. You adopted the plan that showed where those houses should be, and those are the mixed use areas. And that's it. Because and really not a lot of growth. Remember, we're talking about potentially fifteen hundred houses over twenty years and seven hundred fifty of those are already baked in with other projects. So it's roughly seven hundred, seven hundred forty total units over new units over twenty years. And we are well behind that trend line now. We haven't done any essentially no dwelling in it. So we're not talking about a scale of development that that is that would drive us off the road. However, Alderman Savage is is challenging us with innovative thinking about how we structure planning and financing of transit improvements with a land use policy. And for that, we're very grateful because it challenges us to think about that. And Eric and I haven't had time to really delve into the the nuts and bolts of the amendment that you've seen. But we want to. We look forward to working with this committee, the Environmental Committee, and the City Council to work this out. In the meantime, we have a good set of land use recommendations that implement the plan. But that's all they do. They implement the comprehensive plan. They don't go, they're not transformative. You know, this is not changing the land use pattern for the city.
I like the fact that you're talking about incremental density increases, and that might allow for simultaneous work on transit.
We think so. Yep.
Yeah, I know. Commissioner Pline has a comment. I just wanted to say quickly that I'm frequently having to just acknowledge and remind folks that things happen very slowly in this in this town in terms of development change. I don't I don't want to say that as a cop out or, you know, that we're not going to necessarily rely on that, but we don't certainly don't expect that the sort of domino effect along these major quarters to happen very quickly. I think it's about seeding some incremental change, as you say, and this is about the possibility of creating a walkable village at the roughly the intersection of Forest Drive and Tyler, next to the middle school. It's a type of density that would allow for underperforming commercial development to be put to mixed uses so that we can begin creating the real pedestrian amenities, boulevarding the Forest Drive, wide sidewalks, new signal preempt signal timing that favors pedestrians, signal preemption that can favor buses in the future. And making it safe so that we can rehab the entire sidewalk network, bring the sidewalk away from the road, you know, connect pedestrians and kids at safe intersections. That's what this is this is about. And this drives some real discussions with real developers who have contemplated those things and found that the standards that we have now are not enough to make it work.
Kind of reminds me of AutoZone, the the project we just looked at, and it was a great opportunity to maybe get some residential. But our zoning code won't wouldn't allow it. So it really is an underperforming. So so I just want to ask more questions. I have a lot more, but I'll just go right now. In terms of affordable housing or moderately priced dwelling units, I saw no language at all in what's being proposed. Isn't this a great opportunity to talk about?
It is. It is. I mean, we do have our moderately priced dwelling unit provisions already in place. This they would continue to, you know, any project over ten units would would
Could we, could we, that just, you know?
But that's that's for this body to consider. I mean, it's it's not in there today, but perhaps it could be.
We could add it instead of being up fifteen percent, make it twenty, whatever. Okay. And then you were talking about green space and the the need for more green space. And would this change our adequate public facilities law? Or is this go along with it, APF for recreation?
It does not change the APF requirements.
I mean, it feels like.
Right. Those would still apply. What it does do is broaden the types of open space that would factor into these developments to to look at.
So you couldn't you couldn't argue that a a school playground is a park under the what you're envisioning in this?
This, what we're envisioning doesn't address the APF standards at all.
So the APF standards just stay as they are. Isn't this a great opportunity to make sure the APF standards are?
You will see us again right next door. And and believe me, this is the first tranche of zoning text amendments that we want to get done while the City Council is in is in session. But as as we talked about, there's a two year comprehensive zoning process that we're engaged in. We like to deal with the West Street corridor, for instance, in creating more mixed use. We like to improve the qualities of the development potential in our PM zones that that are shown as mixed use on the plan. There's a lot of things we want to we want to rezone, rehab the APF standards to favor the evaluation of transit rather than the end result being a bigger highway or bigger turning radius in order to satisfy the impact of development. We'd rather satisfy the impact of development by ensuring that there's a contribution to transit. So we're, these things will come to you.
We just can't do it now.
The guy, our guide is the comprehensive plan, and we pull these ideas from the plan. We can't simply can't do everything.
Thank you.
Mr. Pline?
I have a question. Mr. Klein has one. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Klein.
Yeah. The density of the planned development. You know, the way I see that increase is more so as an incentive to make these things, these kinds of developments. Pencil, would you agree with that, Eric and Chris?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And as the the benefit of that is it also creates more possibility for flexible design and creation of better streetscape and and it fits within the character we're going for.
I have a question about a development I noticed going on. That's not part of the slides you showed us. In the town center, what was a big parking lot is now being dug up for some new development. You know what's going on there?
Yeah, it's it would be outside the city in that location. Yeah, yeah. Solomon's Dome is really the limit right there. So yeah, if it's part of that town center development.
Right. On the other side of the Alexander Restaurant.
Yeah.
That's not Annapolis? Oh, okay.
It's a common misconception.
We don't think it's a town center. We don't think it's Annapolis.
It is. It's a misnomer.
No comment, though. I did chuckle at that because many people think that that, just like the Annapolis Mall is not in Annapolis. Right, sorry, recognize. No, I I think this is good. I recognize that it's a it's a step process. You know, my notes here, for example, that, you know, the Maryland Land Use one dash three oh four law states that, you know, we have to go through this process of making sure our ordinances match that adopted plan. So this is one of the reasons why I voted against the AutoZone thing, because according to the Maryland state law, it that I don't see complies with what we have unanimously adopted in our comprehensive plan. So I'm really happy to get this started of bringing this in. I'm really pleased with the amendment from Alderman Savage that I've read. I'm looking forward to that discussion.
I have some questions about how you arrived at certain things. It's it appears that special mixed plan developments are sort of the focus here more than more than any. Not quite sure what the advantage is to business plan developments. But let's take a look at the special mix. The legislation, if I'm not mistaken, outlines certain places where the number of dwelling units may be increased. And it simply says property that fronts directly on Forest Drive. So that leaves all of Forest Drive available. Bay Ridge Road east of Hillsmere leaves all of that available. West Street, presumably from Church Circle all the way to the city line.
No, I can correct you there. It's it's only those properties in the along those corridors that are first zoned in a way that allows planned developments. The planned development has to be a permitted use in the use table for that zoning district. Two, they have to be shown on the comprehensive plan designated for mixed use development. So once you go through that filter, you end up with an area of some size, but much more restrictive than what you have in mind.
Okay. My memory as to which zones, you know, allow planned developments is not not very good. And can you, can we show the slide?
I brought it up on this on this screen here. So yeah, I mean, just just to reinforce what what Chris was saying, it's not every property along those corridors, but that's a key condition. Property has to be on one of those corridors and has to be identified as a mixed use opportunity, comprehensive plan, and then, you know, has to be allowed on its its allowable uses for that base zoning. And so that's.
Those are the green areas on this.
Yeah, the green areas. So the ones that are red are still identified as mixed use, but they're in a zoning district that does not allow for they're either not directly fronting one of those corridors. That's, yeah. Or they're in a base zoning district that doesn't allow for the special mixed plan developments. So there's some, you know, that's really what distinguishes these.
The right hand slide. Only the red is what's being proposed.
Sorry, no, it's green. Sorry.
The green is what's being proposed.
We kept the red, you know, everything in red is consistent with the map on the right. Just they don't, they're not eligible for that density increase.
And again, all these areas that are green are eligible today for special mixed plan development at a density of the R under the R four density, which is of works out to about forty two units. What what this code would allow is that those same green areas would be eligible for essentially eight more units per acre. If they develop as a special mixed use development, but they have to meet higher standards now. And and their projects have to be tied to the comprehensive plan and demonstrate community benefits that are not embodied in the current zoning.
Right.
Real quick question. Is this in the Eastport Shopping Center or is that external?
Yeah, that that includes the Eastport Shopping Center and Nautilus Point.
It does, right.
And then the the public housing site is facing that, the Eastport Terrace Harbor House.
On the on the West Street corridor, there's poking up a red kind of cone shaped thing. Where what is that?
This is Park Place right here.
Okay.
Is that what you're referring to?
Okay.
Yeah. The gap that you see here along the West Street quarter, that's due to I think it's the PM zoning is one of the zones that does not allow for a special mixed plan development today.
But we'd like to bring to you a text amendment in the year ahead, actually allowing planned developments in these areas too. Of course, they're going to be sized to the lots that exist there smaller, but it provides some flexibility and also requires these these properties meet the higher standards as well. But if you you have a planned development, you can potentially put fourteen dwelling units versus the twelve that you otherwise could. But in exchange for that, the city gets a lot of benefits. I think it works out. The flexibility created by the planned development, I think, works to our advantage as a public.
Along West Street, the I want to start from Park Place. The green down there, is that the current auto lots?
Some of them, I believe. Yeah, I think they're the the zone there, I think, is, well, it's hard to be specific.
Thirty two zone. I mean, I guess my concern is, and I could continue along, just taking West Street as an example. My concern is that here we are, and with this legislation, we're saying, boom, everything goes. And we're not, we're not really beginning to look at at individual parcels, you know, we're not, we're not getting granular on You know, we're not, we're not getting granular on where it really does make sense to do this. So you're expanding in one kind of fell swoop, a lot of, a lot of parcels.
Well, we're, we're focusing on specifically the parcels where there was pretty broad consensus. There's an opportunity for positive change.
I know, but you're including others.
No, no.
No, we're not.
No.
Well.
We're not rezoning. This is not a zoning map amendment. These areas are entitled to have plan developments now. And we're talking about this special mix with the, the bonus along these main corridors. They, and if the planning commission decides to offer the ability to go up to that 50-unit density, then you'd have that possibility. Currently, they would be capped at 42 units per acre. And all these areas that Eric has shown on this map are designated for mixed use and this concept in the comprehensive plan.
Right.
Yeah.
My concern is that I can't, it's hard for me to see on a, on a, on a much more detailed level, you know, what, where are the, where they are. I mean, some of them I'm reasonably familiar with. Old Solomon's Island Road, you know, Outer Upper West Street, Chinkupin Road. You know, all of those, that's very good, you know. Many places, several places on Forest, specifically Tyler, and then down in Hillsmere, you know, the Hillsmere Shopping Center.
I think what's interesting, and you might, you might see this, is that the Catherine Properties, which is Providence Point, is now, looks like up for special mixed development zone.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth acknowledging that that project was approved and is probably going to be, you know, under construction. So I, so I think that particular project is not, not one
That's that whole area, that's that whole area in green. So it was proved, part of the issue there was traffic and people were trying to cut down on the traffic by not having that big use mall-like atmosphere. And so now what we're doing is saying, approving that, that'll be finished fairly soon and probably will be going. But then we're going to change zoning to allow for special mixed use.
No, no, we're not. We're not doing that.
Oh, no?
No, it's not. This just shows properties that are eligible. They've been eligible historically. And that property went a different way, went a different path for its development.
But it was eligible at the beginning.
Yes.
That seems right because it wasn't an economic development when in 2000. So they just chose to do it that way.
Yeah, I mean, the irony is that there was never legislation that kind of instrumentalized those 2009 recommendations.
Right.
You know.
They were just on the map and they said economic development.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I think. Right, so they were probably zoned to allow special mixed use development back then. We just didn't do that when we were contemplating the, that project.
How did you arrive at 840 square feet?
That approximates 50 units per acre.
That, that's essentially a one-bedroom studio kind of apartment.
Yeah, but that's not the way we think about it. We're looking at the, the total lot area divided by 840 and it works out to 50 units per acre. So it, a lot, the individual units could be any size at all. Now, this is a, a density calculation that's in the code. Just like elsewhere in the code, we say, like in the, in the R1 district, 7,000 square feet per acre, and the R3, 3,600 units per acre, and the R4, 1,700 units per acre. So in a planned development, in special mixed plan development, it would be 850 square feet per acre. So it's just the math.
What I'm thinking of is how, how to encourage more housing available for family. You know, the, the two and potentially even three-bedroom apartment. Because all that's being apparently built along Reaver Road and so forth outside the city is all of this, you know, these 850-square-foot studios. And how is it, what kind of encouragement can we have so that people can actually begin to raise families here rather than stay in solo situ, you know, situation? What, 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 I mean, how do you encourage that?
One way I think about it is, you know, development teams are assessing the market, trying to understand what's being provided today, what isn't. They perhaps all know that there's certain units aren't, you know, what will sell the best most quickly, where there's a need. But they're also constrained by certain economics, you know, in terms of how many units they can provide. And, you know, you think about type of housing that gets built in Annapolis today, it's by and large large, single-family detached homes. And that's a function of our zoning, but it's also what the market would support, you know, the land costs. I think with this legislation, we're, it's a, has an equalizing effect where the land costs aren't going down. In fact, they're going to continue rising. But if you give some additional flexibility, how many units can be calculated into a particular project? The development team has more to work with. They, they probably won't just be building one, you know, single-family, I mean, excuse me, one-bedroom and studio apartments if there's a need for two-bedroom or three-bedroom. But they can't really do that with the economics that exist today. Our zoning code and the land costs really only lead them to one solution. And I think that's the way I think about it, you know. They'll figure it out, but you have to give them some tools.
And it's up to us too, as the public sector, the city, to make the city and its development family-friendly. Make accessways to schools safe. Make them beautiful. Celebrate civic design and public art and parks and open spaces. Make it so that the developers want to deliver products that serve families that want to move here. Or stay here.
I'm beguiled by how to encourage it.
I have another quick question.
Not necessarily requiring it, but somehow encouraging. Not quite sure how to do that. I think, I mean, I think you've, what's here in this legislation is definitely an encouragement of all sorts of things. But that is something I think we really need to think about. And I don't, off the top of my head, an answer. Open space. You add, basically add plazas, medians, gardens, accessible green roof space. In your experience, what, what of those new additions to current required, open space required, will be the most useful? The plazas, is that something that developers have said, I would like to do a plaza, but it, it doesn't count as open space?
It's something that I, yeah, they, it wouldn't, but it would under the current, under the current proposal. Often a plaza i- is just what's right, what's called for in a more urban environment, location.
But it's not currently counted as open space?
Correct.
Okay. I just wondered what the experience was in terms of people who've come to you with ideas, proposals. All right. All right, what else? Relate District. Okay. With that, I think that maybe we should open the
Can I ask? Can I ask? I'm sorry.
You have more?
Just one more question. And I hate to jump around, but this really is important, the 3250 rule. I was reading the definition on page nine and it says, "Any new structures, expansions of existing structures or alterations that increase the size of the bulk building to more than 3,250 square feet floor area as defined in 2172010." So then you jump to that definition and there's, you know, A through H. So are you deleting the current definition and substituting this language? Of how to measure, how to calculate 3250? Or, because I think if you leave them both intact, it's very confusing. And I applaud your intent to try to clarify this.
Okay, so on page nine, that is a, that, those changes are editorial. The, that's the, that's the legislation drafter in the city making big paragraphs into smaller chunks so that they're easier to read. The principal change is the definitional change, which is shown on page 12, which defines floor area and story half. That's, as it turns out, that's the meat of this section of the code.
Okay, so floor area, so the definition under 72, 2172010, the new floor area definition is what is on page 12.
Exactly.
And, and you, you maintain that that makes sense and that'll be easier for your folks to calculate and there'll be no ambiguity?
Yes, floor area is floor area. It's, it specifies how it's measured in the exterior of the walls, but also what happens when a roof becomes the edge of a, a volume of space. Under the curb definition, we wouldn't count that as square footage, but we know that's clearly square footage, right? So, and again, buildings can go over 3250, but if they do, they, they come to the planning commission for hearing rather than being approved administratively.
The other thing I, I was, I guess, a little astonished, but I guess I've seen it now, is that 3250 doesn't incorporate the accessory dwelling unit. You could have a second shed or ADU on your property with almost, with a large four, you know, square footage area, and that isn't calculated into the 3250.
Yeah, accessory structures are not counted towards, because we're dealing with the mass of the principal structure.
Right, right.
It's true.
And it's still the law that with that 3250, you shouldn't be over 50% of the lot coverage in RN2C, RN2NC.
Yes.
Right.
The, the lot coverage standards have not changed.
Right, but our enforcement standards are changing, right?
Our enforcement standards, well, yeah.
We just know of some situations where that hasn't been done and we, we look forward to this. That's all my questions, sorry.
And apologies, I have, if you don't mind, I have two real quick, just, just to add to this. So Annapolis is growing approximately, what, 1% per year in population? It's very low is what my point is, right?
Very low.
It's very low, right?
Yeah, that's probably less.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's, right? So when we increase these, these thresholds, that, that gives the flexibility, but that doesn't mean that a developer comes in and they have to do that maximum amount, right? So how often are we seeing when they have the ability to come in and build something bigger, that instead they're coming in like AutoZone, right? And they're coming in with something much, much smaller than what they're authorized. So my point here being, I think that when we say density, that scares some people. And when we say we're going to increase the thresholds allowable under density, that might scare some people. But that's not actually what we see happens in reality, that developers come in and just max everything out. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Oh, so that's interesting. I would not agree with that, but you know, you're the experts because AutoZone, they couldn't because of the way it was zoned. But if we had let them build, you know, 52 apartments above there, they would have filled 52 apartments if they thought the market would bear that. They always max out what they can do.
No, I, yeah, I don't, I've not seen that.
I'm not, all right. I'm not the expert, but I, I'm very confident that when the developers are given a maximum, they do the max. And when you say you can build moderately priced dwelling units, they're like, of course we will, we'll do more than that. And then they never do. They do the minimum always. The same.
Well, just, I can just say that there's a lot of interest to build gas stations and convenience stores on our major corridors.
Yeah.
To
That's my point.
The commissioner's point, I, you know, they, they are perfectly allowed to do residential over retail today, but it's a more complicated project and
Right, no, I'm just saying it's much more profitable. They'll do that. But I'm not saying they would do something less profitable because
No, I, so my point isn't about profit or anything like that. It's, it's, it's about density, right? Like when we say you can build something here
Right.
and that would increase density, yet we're seeing that they want to build more gas stations and more other things.
But do you think it's because they're making more money at those other things?
My argument has nothing to do with the money aspect. It has everything to do with the fact that if the argument is that people are afraid of density, if they're afraid that we're just going to pack as many people as we possibly can into an area, we don't actually see that happening in reality.
I would look to Pearl Place as your most recent example to determine if that is true.
I, I, I think that it's not good to look at one specific situation. And instead we look at the whole city and, and what happens across the entire city and not at just one specific example. And then what we see is that there's some cases where they do, but a lot of cases where they don't.
There haven't been many cases recently because of cost of construction and so forth and so on. But we have identified certain places in the city where things really could be built that are close to schools and amenities and so forth. Let me, I'm, but just in terms of process here, what I'm going to propose is that we have, well, open the public hearing and comment based upon what we've heard presented so far. And then I would suggest that at the end of that is that Alderman Savage present his proposed amendment for transit-oriented development. And that if there is any further comment, that we can keep that hearing open with comment directly at Alderman, at that amendment, at the transit-oriented development amendment. So it's kind of in two sections. First, let's comment on what we've heard, hear from Alderman Savage. And then if you wish to say more and comment specifically on what his proposal is, keep the, we'll keep the hearing open and you can come back up for a second shot, okay? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Luschinski, as usual.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well-informed. Well said.
And Mr. Kubiak.
All right, so please come up and you identify yourself. And I believe there's a sign up. There's a sign-up sheet at the podium and just put down your name and address, just so that we have a record of who actually appeared and spoke tonight.
All right.
Madam, please begin.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Rachel Robinson, Vice President of Preservation at Historic Annapolis. And I'm here to speak principally about the amendments that affect 2156, the height in the historic district. Ordinance 1425 was introduced at city council May 12th. I'm going to pause. Is the sound okay? I'm hearing some feedback. Everything sounds okay?
Yeah, I can hear you, thank you.
Okay, sorry. So this was introduced May 12th at city council to provide text changes to the zoning code for the purpose of implementing last year's adopted Annapolis Ahead Comprehensive Plan 2040. The comp plan has a corresponding action plan and page 76 includes the point, quote, "Zoning is not well-understood by most property owners and with 31 different zoning districts, Annapolis' zoning is notoriously complex, not just for a small city, but for any city. Part of this is understandable because we are a historic American city and use patterns have changed over time. But HA fully agrees that zoning in Annapolis is confusing and that piecemeal land use decisions have rendered complicated zoning in our small city. Why then would this ordinance create a micro-overlay district allowing for up to 15 extra feet in height in the historic district at the first block of Dock Street between Craig and, Craig Street and the water? Why is this one block singled out for implementation of the comp plan? The why is because this block will front the new City Dock Park. We believe the, this portion of 01425 concerning section 21, 2156, height and bulk limits in the historic district is spot zoning and unnecessary. If additional, additional height is required by a private property owner or developer on this block of Dock Street for an elevator overrun or mechanical penthouse, the property owner can apply for a variance. We do not believe a zoning text change is required and certainly not one that includes undefined or poorly-defined allowable features on a rooftop that could exceed the current height limit at this location of 2838. A few more additional comments. We recommend that you withhold your referral to the city council on this ordinance until the three amendments, maybe just two tonight, referred to in the staff report and noted as forthcoming have been shared and reviewed publicly because we've not seen them. not seen them. Regarding green roofs or living roofs, we recommend definition and specificity. HA supports extensive green roofs that are not, uh, visible from the street. We recommend the language strongly discourage intensive green roofs that have vegetation visible from the street and discourage, and we discourage visible railings, furniture and structures. We strongly recommend that this ordinance go before the HPC for comment because it directly affects one block at the heart of the local historic district. A courtesy, courtesy review at your sister commission is advisable. In closing, I'll reiterate that we consider the new height limit in oh fourteen, twenty-five applied to one city block to effectuate unnecessary spot zoning and therefore it is not good planning. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Commission? First thing I'd like to say is I think that you all have done a very good job with this plan. A lot of the stuff that you're changing is stuff that was done under my tenure, but that's okay because it all looks pretty good. I hear the term spot, spot zoning a lot.
Sir, could you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is John Irison. I live at seven oh seven Glendon Avenue, Annapolis, Maryland, two one four three. I hear a lot about spot zoning. When I started this gig over forty years ago, back when we had very much exclusionary zoning in the separation of, of uses, the only way you could get mixed use zoning was by spot zoning. When you had endless tracts of residentially zoned land and people had to drive everywhere and they wanted some more convenience, so if you wanted to get them some convenience, you took a piece of parcel of land, you spot zoned it. Fourth Street in Eastport is spot zoning. Sixth Street in Eastport is spot zoning. But what I want to say is that suppose you're a jurisdiction and you just spent countless number of years trying to, uh, put forth a vision of your community, countless hours of public research, consensus building, compromise, et cetera, et cetera. And you develop a blueprint for development, growth management and, and everything the growth management means. That's Annapolis Vision twenty forty. Now there are residents and interest groups, et cetera, that say they support the plan, but only in certain areas. So what we have is instead of spot zoning, we'll have a spodally implemented comprehensive plan. It's called a comprehensive plan because it looks at the entire city, not, okay, we want to implement the comp, comp plan at this spot in the city, but we don't want to implement it in this spot of the city. So that's really, if you're, if you're not going to implement it in a holistic manner based upon the broader goals and visions and some of the specificity, then why bother? But right back to where we were. And, and I say that in support of this ordinance, uh, tonight. And talking about accessory buildings or rooftop structures, when one Westgate Circle was approved, which is, you know, the Hyatt Weber Building, you know, outer West Street, when that building was completed, on top, they put a big, looked like a, um, shipping container. That was their penthouse. My phone was ringing off the hook. How could that happen? How could you let that happen? Now, does anybody even notice it? I mean, at the time, I told them, just paint it nonphoto blue so it doesn't show up in people's photographs, but now it's just part of the landscape. All these things that are supposedly the end of the world, they just become part of the landscape, part of the built environment, and we move on to other, other things. And I just want to reiterate that, um, philosophically and under state law, the Planning Commission is the keeper of the comprehensive plan and everything that that means. You all adopted the plan or you recommended that it be adopted to the City Council. And now you're, it seems to me sometimes you start to question what it is that you adopted. But just keep in mind that it's up to you and you're, you're solely responsible to maintain the plan and make sure the plan's followed moving forward. And I just want to reiterate that the plan has to be followed citywide, not just where someone wants it to be followed. So thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Good evening, um, my name is John Richards. I live at one twenty Duke of Gloucester Street, um, overlooking, uh, Annapolis Harbor. I was struck this evening by the comment about there being thirty-one zones and the need to simplify those. But I think too often simplifying really means abandoning the wisdom of experience. You know, zoning code as it is, has been developed over years of compromise. And just in the name of simplifying things, you may well be jettisoning the history and institutional knowledge that was, um, the basis for those various zones to be in place. I frankly don't know what all of them are. I'd be lucky if I knew exactly what was the zone for Duke of Gloucester Street. But in a, in such a broad brush way to say, okay, let's do away with, let's simplify these zones, I think that would require a lot of detailed study to know exactly why this zone had this in it. And, and that's, I would submit to you that, that requires a lot of study to avoid the risks of the law of unintended consequences. Which brings me to this, um, pop-up, uh, zone down on Dock Street. You know, the, uh, you know, this hardly follows the, the rules of uniformity in a particular zone, does it? And, you know, I tried to look before coming here tonight through this comprehensive plan documents, very long, very detailed, very small print. Where in the comprehensive plan did it say, "We plan to raise the height of the buildings on the last block of Dock Street"? Um, I've watched a number of the hearings, I attended a number of the hearings on the, um, docks, you know, the waterfront plan here. And at every one of those, when we were talking about, you know, building a maritime welcome, welcome center, we are not going to violate the height limit of, uh, the zone down on the dock. That's what we were told time and time again, and that's what you all relied on. So I don't really see what the need is for this property to have, uh, exemption from the rules applying to all the rest of the waterfront. The, um, sketch that was provided to you here this evening that wasn't in the, uh, materials to review online, so first time I ever saw it and it's the first time you ever saw it. I'm pretty sure that if you're walking down Green Street, you're walking down Newman Street, if you're walking down Main Street, you're going to be able to see the tops of those buildings, um, and the parts of it that were suggested are not really in the public view. Pretty sure about that. And I have to tell you, living here, overlooking the dock, the noise generated from our lovely city right now that I have my windows open, um, is already too much. And the idea of having yet another platform of, you know, opens, open entertainment on the top of all those buildings down there will go straight into the windows of those of us who live up here on the hill. So anyway, uh, those are the remarks I had about this. It was a very interesting evening, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sharon Kennedy. I reside at nine Randall Court, Annapolis, Maryland, two one four oh one. For those of you who don't know my background, I spent fifteen years on the HPC and I spent twelve of those as the chair. So I feel somewhat qualified to speak on the topic at hand, which is the effect this legislation will have on twenty-one, fifty-six and the height district, um, at Dock Street. I'm going to ask you, I'm going to start with what I want you to do. What I want you to do is recommend to the City Council that they strike the part of fourteen, twenty-five that changes the height district. That's what I think you should do. And some of my reasons have been stated by other people here, but I'll add a couple of things. This legislation sets up access to this new height if you have a green roof. So you have, you have this pre-existing structural thing you have to agree to do, which I think, I love green roofs, water, wastewater management, all that good stuff. But two things I would point out to you, and I think someone's already pointed it out already, is there's no definition that I could find in the city code as to what a green roof is. So how are somebody like the HPC who would have to approve this as a condition of a redevelopment, what guidance do we have? We have nothing. We have developers who will come in and say, it qualifies as a green roof, leaving us out to sea and unable to come to a rational, defensible decision that will stand up in court. So I think that's something that really needs to be dealt with before any of this legislation, just this part, just the historic district part moves forward. I would also point out to you that a green roof is almost impossible to install on a historic roof. In fact, it's not allowed by the HPC because it ruins the historic fabrics. So the only places where they can get a green roof to qualify for this add-on is if they demolish a historic structure or a nonhistoric, non-contributing structure and build a flat roofed building. So it seems to me that the, the, what's happening is this is driving, this legislation is driving to an outcome that somebody wants, which is a big building with a flat roof with a rooftop dining establishment. And I appreciate Mr. Kubiak's transparency and honesty in saying, that is the game. It's a hotel with a dining establishment on the top of its roof. That is the objective of this legislation. And I think everybody in the room knows it, and I think everybody in the city knows it. And I just don't think that's the way you guys should be working our historic zoning ordinance that is here to protect the thing that is the golden goose that runs the economy downtown, which is historic preservation, which is scale, which is diversity, which is a variety of architectural forms and fashions. So I just really urge you to be careful with playing with the thing that has brought Annapolis to its, to where it is today, which is a place we all love and want to protect. And the last thing I will leave you with is in two thousand and eighteen, the administration introduced its first piece of legislation, and it was due exactly this, only in a much more severe way, to the entire section down at City Dock and gave it a sixty-five foot height. And that so enraged people, and in fact enraged a whole lot of people beyond Annapolis, that that was when City Dock was designated as one of the eleven most endangered historic sites in the country. And I just don't want us to go down that road again. So I urge you, strike this part of the legislation, do not recommend it to the City Council for approval. Any questions?
I haven't.
Yeah. I may not have the answer, but...
I'm sure you'll come up with something.
Not always, if I don't know, I say I don't know.
Are those buildings that are included in that circle, are they historic?
As always, as preservationists, it all depends on the terminology. There is certainly one, um, where Sophie's Crepe is, the, the building on the corner, um, is a Victorian era, late nineteenth century, early twentieth century. The rest of them, and Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong, the rest of them are all probably early to mid twentieth century. The tallest one was built before the height district went in, um, which is why it's allowed to stand today as a non-conforming use. If this redevelopment happened, that building would come down and it would have to then conform to the twenty-eight, thirty-eight, um, height district. So once you take a building down, you don't get to rebuild it in its old form.
Is, is the building that houses Sophie Creps protected from demolition?
Certainly the HPC guidelines would make it a very difficult case to make, um, because there's six standards that, um, have to be met in order to allow demolition. And I don't think it could meet the six standards in order to allow it to be demolished. Any more than the Burdis House was allowed to be demolished. I mean, that was the fight over the Burdis House was, it was the last remaining structure that represented that era and it needed to be saved. Sophie's is the same thing on that block.
Okay.
In my opinion, and I'm not on the commission anymore, so I'm not speaking for them.
No, but you, you have an expertise. Does the HPC have, um, review authority over new construction?
It does.
It does?
Yes.
In so far as does it fit within, uh, uh, other than city zoning code, what are, what requirements does it have to meet to pass the HPC?
Oh, there are a hundred and sixteen pages of guidelines that every property has to be reviewed against. In terms of new construction, obviously it starts with it has to meet the height and bulk requirements. And I will note, even though I was personally against the welcome center, they did manage with good design to get it underneath the height district. That building conforms at twenty-two, thirty-two. So when you have developers saying, I can't, I cannot redevelop at twenty-eight, thirty-eight, I just don't believe that's, but back to your question, um, new construction has to, work through certain materials, they can't use, um, contemporaneous plastic, hardy plank, those kind of things. It has to be consistent with the scale and form of the block it's on. It is evaluated specific to its context, not to the entire district. So it's always a block by block analysis. It has to meet setback requirements, it can't break through a setback and, you know, interrupt the run of the, um, the buildings on the block. Roof forms are part of it, window forms are part of it, door forms, brick patterns, I mean, chapter and verse.
So there, there seems to arise a kind of a conflict between a green roof, which you say requires a flat surface and, um, potentially HPC guidelines that might require a slope roof in some way, is that correct?
Correct, I mean, that's, as, as the schematic showed that they showed you, the way the, the, the traditional, so the height district is set cornice roof line. That's when it's twenty-eight, thirty-eight, it's cornice and roof top. And so under modern construction, the consensus has been that we interpret the cornice as that wall that comes up and then stops, and what you called the terrace, that line becomes what we call the cornice. And then they have so many more feet to get to the top. So they could do a slanted roof, and I suppose they could put a green roof on it, um, but that would, so I, it's possible. I haven't thought of every permutation and combination. But I think, I think from the HPC perspective, the fact that there's no definition for us to go to, to say whether or not the green roof qualifies is going to be very difficult. And I know staff will work with, um, the planning and zoning team will work to give them their expertise, but there's no definition to point to. I mean, there is a definition in the code of accessory structures and appurtenances, you know, so that if that is an ask for a developer, there's a definition to go back to and say, does this qualify?
But this is not, they're not talking accessory structures.
They are in this legislation, they do indeed say both accessory and appurtenances would be on those roofs.
Okay. Okay.
Which is why it goes back to the Which is why it goes back to the skepticism of what the goal is here.
Anything else I can answer, if possible?
Is there a question from Mr. Klein? No?
Steve.
Yep, go ahead, Steve.
Sorry, I'm trying to... Is there anything I need to do? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, Ms. Kennedy. Thank you so much for being here. You are stalwart Anapolisans and some experience. I'm just curious, you're sort of speaking on behalf of the HPC, but is it...
No, 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 private citizen.
You're not in the official capacity of the HPC?
No, I have no official capacity. I'm just bringing my expertise to you.
And I just ask, is there anybody here tonight that's actually here on behalf of the HPC?
Nobody has raised their hand.
Okay, so the HPC is not actually recognized tonight. I just want to make it very clear that this is not a commentary on behalf of the HPC.
Correct.
So it's your expertise, and I recognize the fact that you've been around for a long time, you really know what you're talking about. Can I just ask, in your understanding, what's, just in terms of the height differential of what's in the code versus what's being composed, what's that actual difference?
It's my understanding that it's up to an additional 15 feet. So 10 for the accessories, mechanicals, and appurtenances, and five for an elevator shaft. So when you, and they're cumulative. They build one upon the other, because if you're going to have a rooftop dining establishment, they're going to have to have an elevator to get to that floor. So then the elevator extra has to go above it. So it's 15 feet plus over the 30 area.
Chris, can you corroborate?
Sure, I can shed some light on that. A lot of reverb in the room. 10 feet above the allowable height for accessory structures, an additional five feet for an elevator shaft. So that could be, that could extend 15 feet if it's an elevator. These structures combined, the footprint cannot exceed 25% of the roof surface. So it's a relatively small part of the entire roof. So it's not as if the building itself extends an additional 15 feet. It's just that these elements that are on the rooftop do.
When was the original height requirement in place, and what did you think it was governed by, or what was the driver's force behind it, that you wanted to kind of make sure that the integrity of that rule was put in place? You know, even if there's a, I think that there's a use here for that particular building that benefits the city, not just the government or the politicians. We could actually benefit the city, but I don't want to miss the opportunity to understand where your position actually comes from. I think that's actually a little too much. How would you see that a little bit better?
I'll give you what I know, and it is not encyclopedic, because I was not here in 1977 when they put in the height districts. I was either 77 or 78. The district was split into three height districts, trying, the smallest one, which was the 2232, was closest to the water, trying to keep the openness from Main Street, walking down, seeing the water. So it was trying to keep the smallest structures closest to the water. And then the other two height districts were the third, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, it's 2838 and 4555 is the last one, or 3545? Yeah, 3545, were based on where the built environment was at that time. So trying to keep the, allow for new buildings and infill similar to the sizes of the historic buildings. So on Main Street, where you had big buildings already, you were allowed to build big buildings still. And if you were in the residential areas, where you had a typical two-and-a-half story, was the stretch that everyone was infilling, you wanted to stay at two-and-a-half stories. So that was sort of the logic. There's a whole report in the archives that I haven't read in 15 years. So I'd have to go back and refresh my memory any further than that. But that is how it came about. It was after the ordinance was passed, then they put the height districts in. And for those of you who do remember some of the history, it was a, the whole drive to protect the historic district and get an oversight body was driven by the hotel that was built that exists today. That was the galvanizing force in the community to say, we don't want this. We do not want to be downtown Baltimore. We want to be Annapolis, and we want to keep our built environment small and in scale and historic. So that's sort of the background.
Thank you so much. I just, my headphones are broken. Doesn't sound like it is. My only last question. Very helpful, thank you. You have a lot more history and experience here, and also recently on some of these decisions, I feel a lot of weight on us as a commission to make some decisions that are going to affect our town for a long time. So I feel more responsibility to understand the history in addition to what's right in front of us today. I guess that said, why do you think that nobody from the HPC is actually here to comment on this very important issue?
Again, I don't speak for the HPC, and I'm sure Dr. Scott has a reason he's not, I don't.
I appreciate you.
The one other thing, I appreciate the question. The only other thing I want to make clear, and again, this is a personal belief, I have no problem with redevelopment of the block of Dock Street. It is, to the chair's point, filled with non-contributing structures that don't do a whole lot to add to our lovely built environment. But, and use is, you know, a hotel could be a great use there. It's got to fit, though. It's got to play by the rules, and that's what I'm urging you guys to recommend to the city council, is do not change the rules for one development, please. They've stood us in awfully good stead for the last 40 years. Is that it?
Thank you. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, thanks for having me. Jay Schwartz, I'm an architect in town. I live at 119 Archwood Avenue over near Maryland Hall. I've been practicing architecture for 40 years in the city. I appreciate the comprehensive plan and what some of these amendments are. I actually oppose this, the height amendment. I feel like, for a couple of reasons. One, I think it's badly worded. The wording includes an accessory. The code doesn't talk about accessory structures. So there's been discussion here of a hotel or a restaurant. I think the wording needs to change in the amendment. It talks about mechanical room. You don't need a 10-foot-tall room for a mechanic. Okay, so maybe it does anticipate hotel or not. So I think the wording, it's badly worded. And two, I think it's, I do believe, in any other jurisdiction, no matter what Mr. Harrison said, it's spot zoning, which would not be allowed. So those are my two primary comments, really, but I appreciate what Mr. Chukwueke and Lucien's gave done, but I don't think it's a good amendment. I think it's a bad amendment, especially the way it's written. Thank you.
Sir, 10-foot is not necessary for mechanical?
Not in today's world, no, sir.
It's not in the what?
Not in today's architecture. Height of, the size of building that might be there for mechanical units, I mean, we've gone, so there's no variance for height in the city, forgive me, historic Annapolis, but there's no variance for height. So you can't go for a taller unit and get a variance, not allowed in our code. That was brought up earlier. Two, this height ordinance that came in, as Sharon said, in 78, 78, really, was adopted by city council, and it was, I believe, put together by Mrs. Wright, a New York architect. And they, me, and I bristle at the height ordinance every time I do a city project. I hate height ordinance, but without it, we wouldn't be where we are, because it makes probably half our buildings in town non-conforming structures to height. So I don't like it, but in this case, I don't like how this is written. It's too broad. It's too ambiguous. It allows an accessory structure, you know, vegetated roofs, green roofs. I did City Rec Center, I did Allen Heights Building, I'm doing a house on Cheston Street. We use them. Maintenance can be an issue, but they are successful from a storm on a management point of view. So the provisions of this, I like pieces of it, but I just think it's badly written. And I also think it is spot zoning, which would typically not allow.
Let me go back to your architectural expertise.
I'm sorry.
From what I'm gathering, you say it's badly worded. If you were an architect and you had to deal with this, you would be unclear about what they mean by accessory structure?
Correct, at least for one. What is it?
Okay. And you also said that 10 feet is not necessary for mechanicals these days?
Correct. If it's for...
What is necessary?
If it's mechanical units with minituration in today's world, electronic world, smaller units work, smaller units fit. So this is really, to me, this is not driven for mechanical units. You know, six feet, eight feet, plenty. Elevators, you can, you know, minimum, you can have, you don't have to have an old type unit that requires five, six feet overhead. The technology's there not to require such a big space for this equipment. So that's why I think it just needs clarity. This is for an addition to a building? Okay, great, an addition, but don't mix it up with it's for mechanical. I don't just think it doesn't, it doesn't pass muster, if you will.
Okay, let me go back to the elevator, whatever it was called, override.
Override. That's traditional elevator. You need four to eight feet override, traditional elevators.
It needs only four to eight feet?
Four to eight, and that's above the cab height. And so the cab height is going to call it seven feet. So do the math, you know, if it's a seven-foot cabin height.
Seven to eight feet, am I getting this right?
And then you get four to eight, you know, you don't need as tall as I think what's being presented. So I just think it needs clarity on topics of the architecture.
And the third thing was the definition of accessory structure. You said, it sounds like it's written so that the accessory structure can be used for something other than mechanicals?
The way it's written, yes, sir.
You mean like, like a kitchen serving counter?
Yeah.
Or a bar?
Yes, sir. And the provision for the handrail, to me, talks about the same thing. It's for an occupied roof. So I'd like to see more clarity in this provision. What's it mean? Because if it gets, to me, if it gets, if I'm the architect, the builder, the owner, and this is law, I'm great. I'm going after it. I'm gonna, because it's very loose, the writing of it is very loose. It's not clear.
So sir, if it was written in clearer language, would you still be opposed to it or not?
I'm opposed to the spot zoning of the height, because to me, in other jurisdictions I've worked in, I've always been Annapolis, but it's spot zoning, which isn't allowed in most jurisdictions. Here, it's not in the code, but it's, and Mr. Chukwueke, he's been in plenty of other places I haven't been, so he would know better.
Mr. Schwartz, I have a question. If we allowed the height increase more broadly in the zone, in the underlying zone, so it wouldn't be considered spot zoning, in your opinion, would that satisfy you? Satisfy your notion that it's, get us out of what you would consider spot zoning?
I'd like to see the entire heights in the city get reviewed, because I think they're, it's poorly done. But, you know, so, you know, which would be a huge friggin' undertaking. I think the three heights in historic district, they make, half our building is non-conforming. But it has saved the city. That's our city. I mean, I live here. I grew up around here.
But what's the best way to change the height when you have something as special as our downtown area? That's going to look a lot different than parole. Do we just raise the height limitations across the city?
I think that's what would need to happen. You know, reevaluate the height across the cities, three height zones in historic district, reevaluate them. As historic Annapolis, if I may, mentioned, maybe allow variance for specific things, because right now, there's no variance to height.
That's actually interesting to know.
Citywide, there's no variance for height.
No variance, okay. And then you think that if there was a better definition of green roof and what that entails, and accessory structures, that this might act, you know, you might be able to...
I think it's more understandable and less ambiguous. I guess I'm saying the same thing. Now, right now, it's full of holes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
Good evening. My name is Peter Falat, and I live at 353 Sturton's Lane in Pasadena, Maryland. I live at 350, Peter Falat, 353 Sturton's Lane, Pasadena, Maryland. F as in Friday, I, L, L, A, T as in Tom. You're welcome. And I'm here on behalf of the ownership of the property that is currently Latitude 38, and I am partner in the project that hopefully we'll be able to do on that piece of land. This legislation is something we've been looking forward to for many years. We have been talking about developing a hotel on this property since 2015, and we have had numerous public meetings for the first seven years of that opportunity. And we've clearly explained what we would like to do, and we feel that this is an ideal piece of land to create a world-class hotel, boutique hotel, to sell and help celebrate the historic integrity and fantastic place that is Annapolis, Maryland. We are, and we are very pleased to at least be able to see that this legislation has finally been introduced, and we'd like to explain why it is what it is. As you know, rooftop dining has been very well received in Annapolis. Chop Tank Restaurant, I think, makes about $20 million a year in business. That leads to a lot of really great memories for people. It increases the tax base, and it creates places for not only residents, It increases the tax base, and it creates places for not only residents, but visitors to come and experience the great harbor that is Annapolis. Our property is very prescriptively zoned. It's very difficult to build a new viable hotel with a 28-foot height limit and a 30-foot height limit. And as a result of that, we've asked to be able to have this rooftop appurtenance legislation be introduced in order to make an economically viable building. Because of these severe height limitations, we are only limited to four stories. That would be three guest rooms plus a lobby level. The lobby level is, will be a nine-foot lobby. And you know, and I know that that's not a great lobby for the hotel. But fortunately for us, we're able to come in off of Prince George Street, which allows the lobby to be a little taller. So, but in any case, if we use the second floor and the third floor and the fourth floor for guest rooms, we have an elevator override problem. That elevator override is minimally five feet above this roof of the, of the top floor. We also, in order to maximize the property, we would like to put guest rooms across the entire roof of the building, on the top floor of the building. Which means our mechanical system needs to go above the roof. Both of those two items will go beyond the 38-foot height limitation. It's not really, what's the right word? Egregious or outrageous? There's a 75-foot tall building right behind us. And it has been looming over the harbor since the mid-'70s. Our building will help block that view of that building and also create an opportunity to have a rooftop venue. Rooftop venue will be a terrace that'll be accessible to hotel guests and visitors. It'll be open to the public. It will be a place for everyone to go and be able to see a panoramic view of the harbor. In order for that to happen, we need to have the elevator stop extend to that rooftop. And that would be the uses, that will be the accessory use. So you'll have an elevator, you'll have an elevated lobby, and maybe even a bathroom up there, too. We may seasonally be able to use that for dining or wedding venue. The idea here is that we're trying to create a really great place and really celebrate the site and celebrate this incredible investment that will be City Dock Park. And the fact that City Dock Park will be built is a change in use of our adjacent properties. And as a result of that, our properties that are adjacent to such changes are allowed to make revisions and not be spot zoning, not be considered spot zoning. So it all kind of fits very well. We're completely transparent about this. We would like to be able to use the roof, partially part of the roof, as a rooftop terrace. Now, we also would like to put a green roof up there because, one, we're able to control stormwater in a better way. Two, we're able to create a place that people can appreciate what it is to have a green roof or living roof. And three, we will need to be able to have access to maintain that roof. We'll also need to have access to maintain the mechanical systems on the roof. And while some mechanical systems for the building will probably be five to six feet tall, there will be a larger unit, a DOAS unit, which is probably about eight feet tall. So between the accessory space, that would be the lobby of the hotel, the rooftop elevator lobby, that is the reason why we're asking for the 10 feet. So it's 10 feet for the first level, and then additional five feet only for the elevator override. And that's what we're doing here. We want to be really clear about it. We're very excited about it. I think it'll be an amazing place for the city and residents and guests.
I'm going to ask a question there.
Sure.
So-- I can be very gory on the interview, so sorry guys, you guys are very tired. But the number of floors, the number of guest rooms-- and obviously, for the owner, you want to maximize its value and bring as much value to the community. Have you got the prospect of not maximizing the top floor and keeping it low? Whether or not that's a viable opportunity for you? I mean, obviously, the most that you can get, which is not falling into compliance with, you know, what the existing zoning is. I'm just curious, you know, are you falling one floor lower versus that next structure?
Yeah, so--
Maybe elaborate.
Yeah. Keep in mind, to build anything on that piece of land, you have to have fixed costs, which are basically foundation systems and de-watering and all that kind of stuff. And so it's a very expensive proposition. And we really need to have a minimum number of hotel rooms in order to make the project viable. And to be very honest with you, we feel highly constrained with just the 28 and 38-foot. And so to make it less than that just makes the project not feasible.
If you retain the same number of rooms that you want to retain, what effect would rooftop dining have for losing the rooftop dining? What does that do to your project?
The rooftop, the upper-level roof?
Yeah. You didn't have rooftop dining. You didn't have a rooftop elevator lobby.
Yeah, so we would still need to have the mechanical system up there and the elevator override up there. And we would still need to have the access for servicing that equipment. And so that's really kind of, whatever we have up there would be seasonal, seasonal. But we would still need that other stuff in order to get, to use the 28-foot elevation, which, and have guest rooms at 38.
Gotcha. Thank you. Anything else?
Sorry about this, sir. But where's the, where's the location you're referring to?
So it's Latitude 38, the restaurant there.
Oh, Latitude 38.
Yeah.
I'm very familiar with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just ask a third question? Is the, is it true that the H.A. Museum is 45 feet tall?
There are lots of taller historic buildings in Annapolis. It's really, it's very unfortunate that, you know, contemporary development is constrained by height limitations because of one horrible building that was built in the harbor in the mid-'60s. I really think that it's, you know, we would prefer to change, not do this and do a change to this area to Zone 3, where we could at least get an additional seven feet. And we've been going back and forth on this with the mayor for basically, you know, five years. This is an op, this is a way we can work within the Zone 2 and still have a project. And, and so, you know, it's really, it's a, it's a, it's a very odd place thing because the height limits of Zone 2 and Zone 3, while I understand Ms. Kennedy's idea that it wants to step up, you're really talking about a place that's not in the historic district. It's slightly outside of the historic. It doesn't impact many of the beautiful buildings of downtown Annapolis, which, many of which are over, like the Peca House is, I'm sorry, not the Peca House, the-- the one that's being finished right now is 55 feet tall. So, you know, there are lots of tall buildings in the historic district. The Bryce House, thank you. So it's a weird situation. This is a great piece of land. It's, it is a place that the Annapolis can invest in its future. And, you know, we're very happy that Mr. Lesinsky, we completely support the amendments.
I have a quick question. Can you talk about the view shed? If you're standing at the top of Main Street, does this increase in height impact the view shed?
Not at all. Yeah, the view shed is sort of off the cone of that. And it's, it's good in that regard. It's just not, doesn't have the same issue as the other building.
And you're talking about the 75-foot building behind that piece of property you're talking about? Is that the Field House?
Yes.
And then one last question. I know we had an economic development study years ago that talked about the fact that we, I think they said that we were lacking in hotel rooms. Now that there are so many short-term rentals in town, do you think that we're still, we need, there's a demand for more hotel rooms?
Absolutely. Yeah, the hotels are, in Annapolis are, they have high occupancy rates and they have high room rates, so.
All year, you think there are high occupancy rates all year round or just for special events, of which we have a lot?
Well, you have a lot, we have a lot. And it's, it's a, it's a yearly rate. It's not, you know, so, yeah, it's 100% some months and, you know, it's less than 60. But the average is, you know, somewhere around 73%, which is, you know, a very strong occupancy rate.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. I wasn't planning to talk, but I just want to say a few things. I have lived in--
You are?
I am June Miller, and I've lived in downtown Historic District for 26 years.
Okay. Sign yourself in before you leave, okay?
I will, I will. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, sure.
I have watched the city change around me for good and bad. I've sailed the waters. I've come in and looked at the views of Annapolis. I think what is happening and what we're trying to preserve are two things, and that's scale and views. And scale is huge. And scale changes when you add something like the Chop Tank, which is lovely. I love sitting up there and looking at the roofs of Annapolis. But when you come down Main Street, you are seeing it, and it is blocking, half-blocking the water view. So I don't know what happened with that. But here we are, right across from it, doing a similar thing. And when I'm listening to what you're saying, well, yes, there are, there are tall buildings in Annapolis, but they are the historic buildings. They are adding the charm to the views. So if they're higher and their roofs are like this, and they've got the chimneys, that's part of the scale and the view and the charm of Annapolis. You're adding potentially something huge with a flat roof and a restaurant at the top, like the Chop Tank. Again, you've got two modern structures across from each other. And that's right at the point. It is right on the water downtown Annapolis. So I don't think all of the charm is uptown. I think it's also our waterfront. I think we need to think about that. So that's just, just my view from living in the Historic District. And I now live in Acton, which I didn't before. I was in a house downtown. So I've seen it from all views. And I think it's a charming, wonderful city. And I just hate to see this height limit be raised. I really do, downtown. Thank you.
I want to, you asked about what happened with the building that became the Chop Tank?
Yes.
I'd like to give you a little history on that, okay?
Yeah.
That was, used to be faucets--
Right.
--supply.
Yes.
And some of the property around it is actually city property. You know, there's the Donner Park. And then behind that building is also, some of that parking lot is city property. And there was a proposal back in the day during the Panalitis, before the Panalitis administration, to consolidate all of those property. Tear down that building, which intrudes into the views and narrows the promenade, and put a new building along Compromised Street. And now that we've heard from Ms. Kennedy that the HBC would look to see that the materials and the design and its, you know, its congruence with what's around it would be appropriate. It would help to make a pedestrian walkway up Newman Street right into St. Mary's. It would make the promenade along Compromised Street make sense. There would be terraces. It would not be in the view shed. It would be a new building.
Okay.
And then, during the mayoral race, the campaign, there was some outside money that came in, and it was sweep, keep, sweep Annapolis clean or something like that, okay? And everybody who'd worked on this, all the money was together. Mike Bush had helped put all the money together. The sitting governor had helped put the money together. It was ready to go. It would have put that intrusive building, a new building would have been off the street. We would have had a much better sidewalk situation. The whole thing would have been better. No. The new mayoral administration scotched the whole thing. And then later, it was discovered that some of his backing came from the boat show. And they didn't want to lose six inches of space for the boat shows, and it was up for sale behind the scene. So that's a little bit of a history for you.
So that's how things happen?
Yes. And the other thing I'd like to, just on a factual basis, is that what this legislation does, it doesn't change the footprint of the, if, if a new building were built, okay? It would not exceed the footprint of the building that's there now, okay? And the three or four stories would not exceed the height limit, you know, that exists, okay?
Didn't we just say 15 feet?
And even, even some of the buildings on that street, as you know, exceed the height limit or non-conforming, so forth and so on. The only thing that would change with respect to height limit are things like this elevator override and, you know, the air conditioning system and so forth. And then there's the question of the rooftop dining. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't increase the number of floors, so to speak. You're just talking about the accessory structure.
I understand that. But I'm picturing that it's going to be a flat roof. It is not going to be anything that's going to be charming like the rest of the--
That's a very--
And it's going to be not a flat roof, a flat restaurant like the Chop Tank.
Yeah, I understand.
I'm just saying, I think it's all about views and scale and--
Yes.
Put it, put it right out there. It's not all just about numbers.
I don't think that it would intrude on the view. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Scales there. Gotcha. All right. Thank you for coming. All right, anybody else?
Can I, Bob, just a point of order, I'm going to ask, are we voting on something tonight relative to this proposed legislation? I'm just curious now. It's pretty, there's a lot, there's a lot in this. I'm just curious what our endgame is here first tonight.
I, and, yes, we're going to try to. Depends on, you know, what the comments are and what the discussion is and where we want to go with it. There's some time constraints, there's some time pressure. And if necessary, what we'll do is have to have a Zoom meeting on the 29th of June. If, if we do take a formal action tonight in order to review the file.
Let's see if there's any other comment when we get to the discussion.
Okay. What I'd like to do now is, I think we're going to call on patient Mr. Savage. What I'd really like to do is to have a 10-minute, no more than 10-minute break, so that we can relieve ourselves. But I would suggest that people who are interested in the future of the city as a whole, stick around, because this is a very interesting proposal. Okay? Okay, then we will later discuss everything. All right. Okay, we have in front of us Alderman Robert Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's Rob Savage, Alderman Ward 7. Before I get started and kind of shift topics, just one quick quibble based on some testimony I heard, since I do have a background in stormwater technology and specifically green technology, that green roofs can in fact be installed on historic buildings. There's a modular green roof that could be designed based on the actual roof capacity. So it doesn't require removing or putting in a brand new roof.
It what? Does what?
It doesn't require putting in a brand new roof. So there is technology out there to install that on historic buildings.
Sorry, I think the comment was that green roofs aren't allowed in the historic district currently, not whether it's possible.
So getting on to my comments, thank you for the opportunity. And, you know, I've been here probably more frequently opposing growth and density. But, you know, I've I've sort of, I think I'd like to think that I've grown over the years and learned quite a bit. And so I'm not here in opposition of this legislation. And I do see benefits that density can bring to our community, be it tax revenue, economic development, more housing choice. But really, I think that's only if if the growth is properly implemented. And I want to be clear that the proposed density for, the proposed density increase for residential planned unit developments would, I believe, as listed in this in the staff report, double the allowable density as well as it would lead to a 50% increase in the density for special planned unit developments. And so I just want to make that that point. But let me back up a little bit because really, the reason I hear this is, this would impact a portion of my ward because I do have Bear Ridge Road, which slash Forest Drive within my my ward. And, you know, as an Alderman, I will say some of the top complaints I received from people have to do with traffic, safety and parking. And in particular, you know, I just want to point out that Forest Drive is the most dangerous road in the entire county. And West Street is also on the top 10 list. And so this proposal would not do anything to address those concerns as far as traffic, safety and parking. Now, it does help with increasing our housing stock and moving towards mixed juice, but there's no guarantee except for our MPDU regulation for affordable housing. They presumably would have to comply with our MPDU, which would have 15% of the housing would have to be moderately priced. So, but again, it would it would add the density and add car traffic to some of these most dangerous roadways. And so for me, I really want to make sure we have a plan to address those impacts for my constituents. And so what I talked, spoke about a bit in my written testimony and in the amendment was how that approach is what's referred to as density driven development. And that does, again, help to address the housing crisis by adding the density. But it does perpetuate the short term impacts from that growth, which are the, again, the traffic issues, the parking issues, the safety issues. And it also, but it is an incremental approach and it gambles in hopes that future tax revenue from that density will go towards the solutions to these problems. But the problem is, it doesn't lead with those mechanisms and it really, again, gambles that future elected leaders will have the same priorities as far as how to spend that tax revenue. And so that's why I have still have a hard time supporting density without at least a path forward to address the complaints and concerns that I hear. And that's what what I've been trying to do with this amendment. And because, you know, I think we really should not be granting density increases without the mechanisms that help us achieve all the visions that we have in the comprehensive plan. Now, this includes our mobility goals, environmental goals as far as clean transportation, sustainable mobility, as well as our affordable housing targets. But we also have in the comp plan, safe streets goals. And we have, you know, talk a lot about adopting Vision Zero. There's even a goal to move away from auto dependence. And I want to read, there's a goal to move away from auto dependence. Automobile dependence, yeah. And just to read one quote from the comp plan, which I like. You know, "The city's best strategy for reducing traffic congestion both within and outside the city is a continued focus on mobility improvements that reduce automobile dependency within Annapolis and the broader region." And as you know me, my focus is environment. And the reason I've become passionate on that is because, you know, 30% of our carbon emissions are from the transportation sector. So we need to figure out a plan for that. So I do think that this can be improved to be in better compliance with our comp plan. And so what I'm trying to do is move away from this density driven development towards transit oriented development. And what I propose to do is use the the phrase high value transit to drive and enable not only the density growth, but the more, the affordable housing and the shift towards green transportation, sustainable transportation. You know, I just recently got back from a conference in Portland where we learned about a number of other jurisdictions that have high value transit. In this case, it was streetcars that they use to enable restorative redevelopment, affordable housing increases, as well as just the economic boon that you really see from that high value transit. And so one of the things I learned out there is that it's, you know, when I was just talking this with the directors, originally I thought this was really just a transit push, but what occurred to me is that it's it's planning. It's all about the planning. These jurisdictions that have successfully grown with transit led development have mechanisms that they put in place first. And that's also why you see federal and state jurisdictions who support transit oriented development require these zoning changes first because they want to know the jurisdiction's serious before they make that investment. So some of the mechanisms that they have are the community benefit agreements. And, you know, it's all these important, they were used, they signed contract with the developer who was going to benefit from the density, but they used them to say that the community benefit is to get the affordable housing built first. That is an incredible need in Portland, given all the homeless that they have there. So that was their community need. And then the developer agreed to it. And they even said, if you agree to this, we will give you even more of a density increase. And so another mechanism, which I mentioned in the amendment, are TIFs, Tax Incremental Financing Districts. And those are where you guarantee all the 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 future, the future tax revenue from the future growth, the future density goes towards a specific purpose, in this case, often transit. So it'll go towards paying off your high value transit or and or operating your high value transit. And so, again, that's the risk with density driven development is it, you already give them the green light for density without getting these agreements in place. And it's a lot more difficult to play catch up. We missed an incredible opportunity to actually have the developers partner and pay for this infrastructure, which we all, I think, agree we need. You know, we'd have, we talked so much about mobility needs in the in the comprehensive plan and not to mention the climate needs again. And that's something, you know, I've just, as a side, I've noted in the environmental community. Environmental community does not focus on transportation enough. And they don't focus on transportation enough. And similarly, with affordable housing, you know, I've written an op ed on this before is that for affordable housing to maintain, to continue to be affordable, you have to have transportation, free transportation that will allow people to get away from their cars and their automobiles.
Did you say free or just some kind of transportation, public transportation?
Well, ideally free. If you look at other transit systems, the most successful are those that are indeed free. Including ourselves, our most successful transit route is the circulator downtown, which is a free. And I'll get into that a little bit. So my, what my amendment does is you'll notice it, it reduces the baseline density increase. And the reason I'm doing that, but it also raises the maximum even higher in some cases than what the department's proposing. And my rationale is that I don't want to say, again, I don't want to say no to the blanket increase in density necessarily. I want to at least grant some of that. But I want to at least, I want to also have an incentive to show the developers who want to actually work with us that here you can get an incredible amount of added density if you actually work with us on this transit oriented development. And so it also plays, would place conditions to ensure that the community benefit agreements are realized, to ensure that the jurisdiction plans out the high value transit and also ensures that affordable housing is provided, right? And that's where in the legislation I'm proposing that they would have to agree to. And this is just a 30% of the housing of the added density would have to be affordable or below market rate. Again, the current, the current percentage required under our MPDU is 15%. And so I'm proposing, since they're going to get a lot more density, increase that to 30%. And so it would also require the city to plan ahead and put these TIFs in place so that we have those before the density is granted. And so just a little additional background, in a high value transit, what I mean by that is are things like streetcar trolley, also bus rapid transit, which is where you have hardened bus stops similar to a streetcar. You also have dedicated right of way for these mechanisms, for these technologies. And you also have increased reliability. So they have a headway that's often 15, 20 minutes so people can expect it. Because my point is, we need, our our existing bus system is not sufficient enough to get people out of their cars. Now, you could, our existing APF, which was mentioned by Commissioner Butler, I believe, our Additive Public Facilities Ordinance currently does require that they look to add bus stops, right? But to me, it's more than just adding a bus stop. If they add a bus stop for our system, that's not sufficient. And I'll explain that because what I've learned, I'm also on the Transportation Committee for the council. I've learned that our existing bus system, we've done some ridership surveys, and 60% of those who use the bus system don't even have a driver's license. 80% of the people who use it have only one car. I'm sorry, that'd be 20%. 20% of those people have one car, right? 80% of them don't have any cars. So 60% no license, 80% no car, 20% have one car. If you have more than one car, you basically don't use the bus system at all, right? And about a plurality of the people who use the bus system. And about a plurality of the people who use the bus system make under $20,000, essentially poverty. Majority make $40,000 or less. So it's serving those who need it, but it's serving them to get them to work, not around town. It's not designed to serve to get those who have more than one car out of their vehicles. And that, I think, is what we need to do in order to solve our traffic and parking problems, is to get a system that will get people with cars out of their cars. And that is why I'm pushing for how to work in transit-oriented development, because that is the way to pay for these systems. And we've seen an incredible amount of money from the state and the federal government to do so. And I'll also just say, ending that section, is that, in my mind, it's not a, I understand there may be concern that this would delay some of our density increase, but my point is, we are working on, on these plans for a high-value transit now. We've approved this past Monday, $100,000, which is going, there's also going to be money from the county, hopefully from the state, private foundation money, to go towards a study for high-value transit on West Street. We also secured another $100,000 to go towards a similar study on Forest Drive. Because again, if we're at, we need to have a plan in place that we can direct developers to help pay for and partner with us to build out. So again, I say that because it's, again, it's not a pipe dream, it is something we're actively working on. So as far as next steps, and these are things I have not even necessarily worked into this amendment, but things for you to contemplate would be, we could go even further, and we could say, identify opportunity areas. And I think a couple of you mentioned, perhaps it was the chair, getting a bit more granular with some of the analysis, because right now, this legislation focuses on entire corridors, but it doesn't call out specific areas where we want to seek this restorative redevelopment. For example, something like the old Fourth Ward, we need to do restorative development on. If we had a transit system, we would have full justification to ask the county to perhaps remove the parking garage, and we could rebuild that community, put affordable housing there, right? Think about the county, their opportunity area would be Annapolis Mall. We have the Arch District in Annapolis, which has not really been fully realized, is it could be another opportunity area for us. Or the public housing along the route, such as Admiral Oaks. Plenty of opportunities, but I think we do need to drill down and identify some of those specific transit-oriented development districts or overlays, and perhaps have some of these density increases be connected to those. I haven't fully fleshed out that idea, but that is just something I want, kind of a seed I wanted to plant in your heads. And I think that's about, oh, and also, like I mentioned, identify some of these restorative redevelopment areas. But again, I do think this is feasible. We're moving forward with our high-value transit initiatives. We have partnerships exploring this. And for me, I think this transit-oriented development is really how we achieve, at least for me, my vision, and I think the comprehensive plan's vision for sustainable mobility in the city. That includes pedestrianizing our streets, some of our streets, and includes achieving our safe streets, our Vision Zero. A lot of these things, mixed use, it's mentioned, and, you know, that's one thing I wanted to mention, we call out mixed use on a lot of these corridors, Forest Drive and West Street, but mixed use requires, and I think this is mentioned in the comp plan, pedestrian traffic. We can't, and again, those are the two main, two of the most dangerous roads in the entire county. Adding more cars is going to work against our desire to have mixed use. We have to have a plan moving forward. Transit will allow us to do road diets, it'll allow us to put in all this infrastructure for active mobility, and I know the department's working on an active mobility plan. And so in my mind, that is planning for the future that we want to see, right? Instead of just planning for this narrow vision of growth. And so that's kind of the direction I want to go with this amendment, and I happy to receive any kind of feedback from the commission as we work to refine this amendment. But I know the department and the, my colleagues are very open to wanting to incorporate something along these lines, but we could definitely use your input on this.
Questions? Comments?
I'll comment. The, Alderman Savage, I really appreciate this. I think it's fantastic. I think that when we talk about development in the United States, and we start bringing up transit-oriented development, the rest of the developed world says, "Yeah, that's how you're supposed to do it." When you, you don't build a city and then overlay and figure out where to put the rail tracks, for example, right? You first put the rail tracks, then you develop the city around it. I think that is the direction that this is going, and it's really fantastic, I appreciate it. I think that when we're thinking about the comprehensive plan, and not only do we think about transportation or transit-oriented development, but we also need to move the amenities closer to the people, because that will also reduce the number of vehicle trips taken, right? And so I think that Alderman Savage and I are in alignment with this idea that density without amenities is just crowding, right? And you avoid crowding by assisting people with putting amenities nearby, and then also recognizing that transit and how we get people moved around is how we connect people to opportunities, opportunities like jobs, and that this is a really great amendment to be able to push into this legislation.
And I'd like to just add that I think our planning staff agrees with Mr. Savage on all these major issues that have to do with transit-oriented development. I feel like maybe you just feel pressure that you have to get something done that's impactful this, you know, this session, if you will. And I feel like, well, I guess the question I have is, what would the downfall be in sitting on this until we can not just adopt your amendments, but make sure we add some of these other things? I love the idea of, you know, identifying these opportunity areas, especially areas like the Annapolis Mall or Admiral Oaks, underserved communities that would really benefit from having the transit-oriented development focused, so that when we come, we came back, we could, we could include all of that. I mean, is it a one-year delay? Is it six months? How, can you talk about the study that you've gotten money for? Was it a grant, or was it city VIP money?
Both of the studies, they're just our one-time-use reserves, which we often use for these studies, but we are aiming to get that RFP out, or the feasibility study for at least for West Street, out within the next, frankly, out within the next two or three months.
And that's just looking at West Street, it's not Forest Drive, or?
Yeah, that one, that one really, honestly, was spurred on, as much as I wanted to focus on Forest Drive, West Street makes a lot more sense for the initial investigation, however, because of this legislation, it kind of spurred me along too, and I got that included in this, the current budget. And so that one, we need to, I still need to chat with staff, and also the county, because I'm, I think they would have interest in joining us on that effort as well. But we have to, we're a little further behind on that one. But that's probably going to be a phase, a very closely, almost parallel phase two with, yeah. But then I think the phase three, which is an interesting next one, is we're going to probably combine the staff's efforts with their active mobility plan for the entire city that they're going to be working on, because we would have to tie these transit, even the high-value transit, with active mobility, with our existing bus system, with the micro-mobility. And so there's a, there's a lot of that effort going on, but, you know, we have a lot of interest on the council, so, yeah, I think it's going to, I'm pretty confident that it's going to keep moving forward.
I have a question for the staff. Do you have any projects in the upper that would, that if we didn't pass some of this density increase and the changes that are discussed, that would go away, potentially not happen?
Yes.
Okay. Those are my two major.
So I have a comment about the proposals. In general, the density bonuses in the legislation, not the proposals, that they're not, Jakubbiak, they're not really so all that significant. And while I am very much in line with the goals and things in this amendment, they, to me, seem quite grandiose with respect to what's proposed in this, in '14, '15, '25. And I just, I still have a little mismatch between the, you know, things like high-value transit and these small, these small increases in density, and, you know, things like high-value transit, especially if you're talking about rail. We're talking huge amounts, and I think, sort of, I agree that you have to plan first things while you're doing density increases, but I think there are many more things that would be more feasible to do in the short term, might be better considered. So while I agree with the motivation behind a lot of the stuff in the amendment, I just think it's probably a little too grandiose to go along with, you know, what's in '14, '25. So I'm not really in favor of it, honestly, just because I think it's going to be hard, hard to practically implement in the way that it's intended, because of its sort of really big picture nature. And, you know, I wouldn't want to hold up some increases in density that Jakubbiak, really going to have a huge effect in the short term, you know, kind of held up, waiting for these, you know, sort of bigger picture transit-based things to happen, which, you know, especially with talking lots of my, you know, rail. So.
Can I give some thoughts on that, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Yeah. And as far as the density not being all that significant, it may not be, but I think we can't lose sight that our current situation is not acceptable. It's not sustainable environmentally, it's not safe. People, again, we have the most dangerous road in the entire county, that is not acceptable. Adding any amount of growth will not solve that. We have to have a solution. You know, it may be, sound grandiose, but we've been doing a lot of research. We've, we sent a delegation with the county.
I'm sorry. Yeah. Those, those problems, whether they're, regardless of the increase in density or not, and there are ways to address those things. That you can do tomorrow, but nobody wants to. So that's like a whole other discussion. I don't want to hold that red hair up there. Sorry to be so blunt about that, but.
Well, I mean, I, if you have, if you're saying there are other ways to do it, let's hear it. I mean, now, this is the perfect, because that is ultimately the problem I'm trying to solve. I cannot accept.
Nobody wants to leave the drive safely.
Alex, hold on, hold on. Let me finish.
Wait, 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 one at a time.
Let me finish my thought, please.
One at a time.
You know, I, I want, I would be happy to hear about some other alternatives. You know, we are looking at a lot of active mobility alternatives, but that is not going to solve the bigger picture. It's not going to solve the big, which is, which is, how do we get those with cars out of them? We have to have some kind of alternative, and, you know, we've seen this work in other jurisdictions. There's a lot of money out there that is available for transit-oriented development. You know, the state has committed $1 billion for the Mark Corridor for transit-oriented development. They committed money up in North County around Glen Burnie at the, one of the light rail stops, blanking on the name right now. But you also have to look at all the millions of dollars that the state's dedicated towards road expansion.
So if I can interject myself into this conversation, Mr. Pline, are you saying that in the long run, this is grandiose, or are you saying that it doesn't fit into the current legislation before us, '14?
I think it's a much bigger picture than what's in front of us. You know, what's in front of us is just very modern increases in the density of transit development. This is talking about a really big picture, long-term.
Yes.
And what I, I could say, very, very, very high-dollar transit investments, which I agree with, but I think that there's a scale match, a time scale match on this kind of stuff.
Okay.
So that's the problem. So like, I don't fundamentally disagree with what's right here. I just don't think it belongs in this legislation, because the time, the time stands to match.
Okay. That's exactly.
Express that.
That's an answer to my question. You need go no further. That's an answer to my question. Okay? All right. All right. So my comments are at this point, and we need to move along, because we do have a huge piece of legislation that we do need to deal with tonight, okay? First of all, I completely support and am in accord with what Chris Jakubbiak said earlier. This is, it's visionary, even Pline said visionary, and it's something that's really getting, you know, staff excited about, and it's something that needs to be worked on. And I cannot congratulate you and thank you enough for bringing it up. What I find to be the real kernel in this is that it uses a system, it changes the numbers, but it uses a system of encouragement, of, what's the word I'm looking for, incentive. You know, rewards make people do things much better than punishments do. And so it uses a very ingenious system of reward to get things moving down the road. And I, I think, I don't, if you're the author of that, then, you know, you'll go down in the history books. But if it's something you've learned from other jurisdictions, thank you for doing the research, because that's really a key to this, is not by saying, you know, it's by offering more. And, but what's missing here is a lot of, what is a community benefit agreement? You know, what's to be involved? What's to be expected? How could staff, you know, confront an applicant and say, "We want this out of your community benefit agreement"? He says, "No, I can't afford that." But if it's clear, if there's some objective standards, before he brings his application in, he's going to have some idea of what's going to be expected. The third thing, I think, the same thing with respect to the affordable housing. The numbers really need to be looked at. They really, we really need, you know, this, this idea needs to be formed. You know what I mean? It's just like we did with the Forest Conservation Act, there needs to be some specifics that allow everybody the clarity and objectivity that we need in order to get this. The third thing is, you know, Alex Pline is really correct in that this is really long-term. What I see involved is not only tax increment financing, but also, and I think that you've addressed this, is segregating any monies that are gathered as a result of this to be used at the time when we're ready and have decided what to use it. And so you, the studies on West Street and Forest Drive are the foundation for what, a decision that might be made five or 10 years from now. And meanwhile, money accumulates if it's, we properly segregate it. I also think off the top of my head is that the only really big development that's going to make any difference is what could happen in the Hillsborough Giant Shopping Center. That's the biggest one that's around, and possibly, potentially, you know, something on Old Solomon's, but we'll see that. I'm not quite sure. We haven't annexed the property that we might need to annex to make that really happen. What else is there that's that big? You know, you know what I mean? Okay. So I, I don't want to, I can't spend a lot of, or we can't spend a lot of time on this tonight, other than to say, this is a major step forward, to begin thinking about things in advance. And so, you know, I personally encourage that we continue it, but if I'm not mistaken, I'm getting the sense from Mr. Pline and perhaps the others, that we, we can't do that tonight. All we can do is signal to the city council, if that's what people think.
Well, I think the amendment is well thought out, and I, I like.
Okay. Okay. And later tonight, we'll come to the, whether we're gonna have a, a vote on this amendment as it stands. Okay? That's my feeling at this point. Okay? Now, I offered a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment on this transit oriented development? Fine. Okay. I am going to, um, uh, propose that we simply table this so that we don't need to go through all sorts of procedural connections later, if, when you're ready to bring it back, although I'm sure we'll advertise it and it'll be in a much better shape and it may be even the next council. I don't know. Okay? But that's my proposal for, well, that's, that's my proposal for now. Ms. Butler, you have something different to say? So I'm gonna move that we table the discussion on this amendment to be brought back at any time that it's ready to be brought back.
Would that be tabled?
Okay. So now a discussion on that motion.
Well, can I, can we ask, see if Mr. Lyschowski had something to add since he, he came up to the table?
No, I did. I just was in case there were questions, like, you know, just being preemptive.
I, I just wanna say you bring up some very important points that we should definitely take into consideration with regard to transportation and portable housing and so forth. And we have to look at it sooner rather than later. So I thank you for bringing it to the commission.
Yeah. And if I may just say, I, I'm not even necessarily looking for a specific endorsement of this amendment, because I, honestly, I've not even had a chance with the budget going on to get this, run this past staff, other than general ideas and direction. What I would benefit from, I think, is from a general concurrence of exploring this idea. If the commission concurs with that, I can go ahead and do that more with staff, but also if you have any other specific tweaks or specific additions, like you've started to, to give me, that I can look at with this amendment as we develop it into its final form.
Well, I might suggest that, as we go along, cause it's, this is a major move, is you consider a work session where we can just sort of kick back a little bit and talk about these things and not necessarily by way of an amendment. There's no reason why we couldn't do something more informal. But what you're looking for is an endorsement of the general concept?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Ms. Butler, do you have anything to say?
Um, no.
Okay. Okay. So there's been a motion, it's been seconded to that, and that would table this particular amendment for future discussion. That's all I can say. Okay? Okay? Any, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Aye.
Great. Okay. Very good, sir. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Now I can go back to our, our main topic tonight, which is oh fourteen twenty five. And there are two amendments. One of them has been withdrawn, but let's go to the meat of the issue. Public hearing is now closed on oh fourteen twenty five, with the exception of the transit oriented development, which is tabled. Okay. Now ten, ten, ten. Oh, gotta keep going. I mean, this, I don't mean to pressure you, but there is some pressure. If we as a commission want to get this thing before the council, so that they can decide on it before they're disbanded at the end of October, then that means that we need to make some decisions tonight and possibly convened by a Zoom meeting. I can't, apparently not the June 29th, that's Sunday, but perhaps earlier that, the week before, something. I mean, we just have to do something. I mean, it's, that'll be up till later. We'll deal with that, if we come to decisions tonight. Okay? And then findings can be written, they can be circulated, and then we can have a quick meeting, uh, to deal with that. And then it can be pushed onto the council and standing committees can start to do their work. Okay. Preliminary observations.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Before we start to say our pieces, you know, maybe one way we can go here to try to get to ground as quickly as possible is to see of this sort of forces in this legislation. Are there, are there pieces that, you know, are not gonna require much discussion that we all agree on, that we could just sort of get out of that?
Yes. That's perfectly possible. In fact, I can begin to choose them and I can leave, the only thing that we received public comment on tonight was that particular zoning on city. Perhaps the rest of it.
I think probably three or four of these. I, I don't know if there's any real, I mean, I could probably.
Sorry.
Anyway, obviously, but we could probably cancel those out of the way.
Yes. What I propose then is I will go through oh fourteen twenty five and, um, and, um, go through the ones that we think that might be acceptable.
I think, um, the rule on how to calculate, um, thirty-two fifty is an easy one.
Is an easy one. You'd like to do that?
Yep.
So that would be. That's the last one, right?
Yeah. It changed the definition to something that's more, um, or less ambiguous, is the right way to put it.
Okay. So let's, let me, let me start off. Number one is the, uh.
Thirty-two fifty, just called the rule of.
All right.
Thirty-two fifty.
Thirty-two fifty rule. And the associated definitions, so correct?
Twenty-one seventy-two oh one oh, yep.
Yep.
Okay. So I hear a motion with respect to just that.
Yes. I motion that we adopt the, um, definition of floor area as represented in, um, oh fourteen twenty-five.
Second.
Any further discussion on that issue? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Right? Mr. Riley, are you with us?
I am.
I second that.
Okay.
Actually, you know what? I have to amend that. We have to do floor area and, um, half-story. It's in the same definition, so we can just say terms under twenty-one seventy-two oh one oh.
Okay. So that's a six to zero vote. Right. Number two, um.
How about the C two, C two A's are different about bar?
Yes. Thanks.
Well, you already said parking requirements, so that's a brand new name.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make such a motion to approve, uh, those.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion now. We all know what Mr. Pline thinks, so we need not repeat that. Thank you. Any other comment? I would like to add to the number of parking spaces, there's the county garage, which is huge, you know, and there's on the weekends, there's the legislative, there's vast amounts of parking that, at the top of the hill. And over time, we'll get better at bringing people up and down in Calvert Street Parking Garage, others. Yeah. Okay.
I think we neutralized the parking. It's a no-brainer. I'm with Alex. I would vote for it.
Okay. All in favor of approving, recommending to council that they approve it, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero. Okay. Number three, what would it be? Um, now we're getting into the meat of. The, uh.
Actually, before we vote on anything, can we ask staff a few more questions? Or is this deliberations already?
Who, ask who?
Staff.
I, I think you can ask staff a question.
Okay. So, um, let me just, my note, taking notes on, um, several people mentioned spot zoning and, uh, we have to do things in a legal way. Can you explain why the rezoning around City Dock would not be considered spot zoning?
It's, um, it's done for a public purpose. This is not done to advantage one entity. Spot zoning is like a boogeyman trying to persuade or cajole or convince you into good, right behavior. This is a tired argument. It's, it's been used to, um, prop up suburban sprawl, to promote exclusionary zoning. Uh, as John Arison, who's a planner in the city and a planner nationally known, has said, uh, we often have, uh, parts of our city that are zoned differently. Um, the, the important distinction is that a spot zoning, uh, is one that is done exclusively for the benefit, solely for the benefit of the individual. You might even see on a zoning map, a whole area zoned residential and one intersection zoned commercial. There's a spot on a big yellow map and, um, that may be there because it serves an important function. It's there because it's an intersection where people can walk to or drive to conveniently, but it's a spot on the map. That's okay, because it's serving an, an important public purpose. And this is essentially important to the, the purpose of revitalizing, activating City Dock. And as Eric and I have said, these changes, if there's a theme that runs through this entire set of amendments, it's about, um, mitigating the obstacles that are preventing smart development. This area and like, uh, other parts that we've looked at are, is promoted for mixed-use walkable development. And, uh, we're just so close to maintaining the integrity of the height district while allowing for a smart development project, but for these difficult, um, height limits, um, when, when we're talking about it is a, a bump up over the allowable maximum height.
But, and it will be allowable not just for one parcel, but all the parcels along Craig Street. Is that correct?
All the parcels and multiple owners. That's right.
Right.
I'm looking at the Maryland parcel points map now. You got eight properties that, that would fall under from Craig Street to the terminus, uh, with multiple properties is, is saying, right? So does that sound accurate?
Yeah. And even if it weren't one, I mean, even if it weren't eight properties, but that, that exists as eight properties.
I think some of the worry that some people have is that it, the benefit is going to one owner and one property. And what we're seeing here is that that is not.
Yeah, there are multiple properties. Um, and I think fewer property owners. I think there are more properties, uh, individual properties than property owners, but, but we're not talking about one owner owning that entire block. And there's rationale here. This is not the, the center of the historic core of, of, of Annapolis. These are not contributing historic structures. Uh, these are structures that are locked in place with zoning code provisions that prevent their development in an area that the land will be elevated by the public while the private property sits below grade in the flood plain. These are untenable relationships that could be resolved by smart incentivized zoning. And that's what this is, is doing. It promotes the revitalization, incentivizes through modest compromises. I, in my office, looks out over City Dock and I see the rooftops. I can count many appurtenances and accessory structures on top of rooftops, flat roofs. And this ordinance does not require that the roof be flat. From the vantage point of anyone on the street or on the park, it could be, uh, a roof other than flat. I mean, it, it, but beyond the roof, the slant of the roof could be flat to mitigate or to do, um, a, a, a green roof, if that's where the commission.
Okay. We're gonna get to that. I wanna, I wanna crawl through in a, in a very categorical way, and I think that that, when we get to it, we'll get to it. Okay? So here's what I, if you have the, you have the legislation in front of you, sort of, no? Okay. Um, I was gonna go through each section. I, I don't know how else to do this, but we just need to crawl through it. Um, starting with twenty-one twenty-four oh, oh one oh, which is the purpose, purposes. And there's some language change in there. It's mostly editorial and, and sort of renumbering. Okay? That's under A. I'm gonna move that that be, uh, we recommend that that be, uh, approved by the council. Second, by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Any discussion about this?
Just the purpose clause?
Talking about section A.
Section A, one through six?
Yes.
No, actually, one through.
Yes. One through six.
One through six.
Okay?
Agreed.
Was it second?
Yes. It was seconded by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion on that?
I would, yeah, I would just say under three, instead of just saying, um, land uses, especially housing, can we put especially affordable housing?
What, excuse me?
Affordable housing. Insert the word affordable behind, in between, um, or the word housing in number three under A.
Well, if you look under six A, it says promoting the supply of affordable housing.
Six A? I was only on three.
Okay.
Three.
All right. Got it?
I don't see.
And it goes on.
Yep. Look at the very top.
Oh, got it, got it, got it. Yep. Okay, it's there.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Six, zero. B. Types of planned developments. Not, all that does is reorganize and renumber. Move to approve.
So moved.
A second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Six to zero. All right. Now we move on to twenty-one twenty-four oh two oh, use regulations for planned development. What this does is allows a greater percentages, um, in each of the three kinds of planned development to be used in different way, not just what's permitted in the underlying zone. Okay? Do we need to go through each one of them or do, do we understand? We ready to go?
Yeah.
I wish they were more, but I'm okay with it written there.
I feel the same way.
You could go with more, but you're satisfied just the way it's.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, my comment that I wrote in my notes was like, why only thirty percent? But that said, um.
Cause we don't have any transit.
Yeah.
That would be the greatest.
We get so great uses in our code, it's ridiculous that we have so many uses, but yes, this is, you know, fair enough.
And, and once again, the focus is on special mixed planned developments in which the percentage is considerably high. Okay? Any further discussion? There's a motion, I, I'll make the motion to approve twenty-one twenty-four zero two zero in total.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains? Ms. Butler?
Oh, it's just giving me heartburn that we don't have any real comments on MPDUs or any of that. I guess we're just gonna have to stick with the current MPDU law, which is fifteen percent of any number of over ten units.
My, my son has that is that, you know, if, if.
You should, the, the.
We should modify it to the back door here.
You know, just. I agree. I think, I think we need to modify it to go along with this because we're doing a lot to add density. We need to update our MPDU, um, law as well. So I'd like to get that on the calendar as soon as possible.
If you would like to arrange a work session with our MPDU staff person and discuss it so that, you know, something may come out of it.
That's what I'll do.
We'll make some time available. That's a, that's a, a long-term way of dealing with it. All right. Moving on to twenty-one twenty-four zero five zero, bulk and density standard. Now, uh. But bulk standards doesn't change, well, the, no, it doesn't change. Maximum allowable density standard does, okay. Residential planned developments, um. 150% more than what's in the underlying zone. In a.
Chairman, Mr. Joviac would like.
Yes.
So it's essentially a 50% increase over what's allowed now. And so, for instance, the way that this would be applied is in the residential, single-family zone, for instance, there's a minimum requirement of 7,000 square foot lots. That computes to, if you had one acre, you could have six dwelling units. Now, with this increase for planned development, you could have nine units. So in a one acre, in a R1 with this planned development, you can have nine units, three more units then. So that's the essential, essentially a 50% bump up on, on the density within the residential zones. Right now, the, when you do a planned residential development, you don't get a bump in density. You can just rearrange the pieces on the site, but you're still capped at the basic density.
Okay. What I would suggest is that, first of all, A, bulk standards doesn't change. So I don't think there's anything to vote on. But go to B, maximum allowable density standards. And let's do it one by one. In a residential plan development, it would increase from 70, 75% to 150?
No, it would essentially be a 50% increase.
50%.
Right.
Okay. So that's B1. Residential plan developments, a 50% increase from six per acre to nine.
For those that are in the residential, single-family zone of the R1 zone.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Like each zone would, each residential zone would be impacted by that 50% bump up.
So if it was an R3 zone, one acre would be capped now at 12 units per acre. If this were adopted, you could do 18 units.
Okay. Any questions? Nope. About what the effects are?
We know what the effects are.
I've got it down for R1. What would it be for R2?
I'd have to run the numbers real quick. It's a practical matter. We don't, we have no possibility for planned development in an R2 zone.
How about R3?
It would be, it would move from 12 to 18.
12 to 18? And what about R4?
I'll have to do the math real quick. Again, we don't have R4 that can be developed.
You have what?
It's not a practical option right now. We don't have an R4 that can be developed in a planned development. But if you, if you just give me a moment, I could do the math. Okay, it would go from 25.6 or 25 units per acre to 38 units per acre.
Okay, but it's not a practical zone in which to do this?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
So we're still on B1 or where?
Residential, planned development.
Yeah, page six of 12.
Right.
Ready, Ms. Billy?
Ready.
Okay. I will move to approve B1.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. B2, it's not, nothing has changed. And B3, special mixed plan developers. Okay, changes the maximum number of square footage. And that's that.
Is the gross development area the same thing as gross square footage?
Excuse me?
I said, is the, I was asking staff, is the gross development area the same as gross, same as square footage?
It could be. Here, gross development areas just, that's essentially, you can measure the entire square footage within that gross development area. Often when we're talking about square footage, we're talking about floor area of space. But here, the gross development area is the entire site. So if it's an acre, it's the entire acre that you use. You don't subtract out other space. We're not excluding part of it before we calculate.
Okay.
The essence of number three is that when you do the math, the computation is 43,560 square feet in an acre divided by 850 square feet equals 5, 51.2 dwelling units per acre.
Fifty, how many?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
Dwelling units per acre.
A lot.
Well, how much does it increase it?
Well, early I said it increases it marginally. What I was thinking is that, but in the R4 or in the special mixed-use development now, the base in a planned development is, computes 25.6 units. But if you consolidate your parking underground, you can go to 43.5 dwelling units per acre. So when I said it's only about, you know, seven or eight more units per acre, I was referring to that higher density that's allowed if you consolidate parking underground. If you, if it's just one surface area of parking, you're, you're computing density of 25.6 dwelling units per acre.
From 25 to 28? I didn't hear you.
It's 25 acre, 25.6 dwelling units per acre.
Okay.
In other words, with a special mixed development, you, you get the density that you're allowed in the R4 zone. Unless you consolidate parking in a parking garage underground, then you're able to project it up to 43.5 units per acre.
So the only way you really get the density is by structuring the parking?
Yeah, and, and the focus now is you get the density essentially if you prove to the planning commission that you meet the standards of the code and you're consistent with the comprehensive plan, you bring in a good project. In fact, you maybe in the future won't have to provide as much parking as you currently do. And, and that would be a positive thing as we read the comprehensive plan.
Good. Okay. Any comment? All right, then I'm gonna move to approve.
Second.
Now, comment, discussion? Let's go far enough, far enough, not far.
I'm good.
Too far?
Fine.
I'm good.
Okay. Any further discussion? No? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. No opposed? Opposed? No. 2124060, open space.
I would just ask that we include, maybe add number four, that this doesn't supersede the APF for recreation.
Pardon me? I can't hear you.
I just want to make sure that, so we're talking about open space, but we also have a separate adequate public facilities law. And I, I think you said that it doesn't supersede this open space law or conversation, doesn't in any way interact. So the APF stands as it is, and this is in addition to that. Okay.
All right. Okay. I'll move to approve.
Second.
21060 in total, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Any further discussion on this? Expanding the definition of open space to include plazas, community gardens, potentially accessible green roofs and so forth.
It doesn't take the place of recreation. I feel like we have to put something in there. Can we put something in there that just clarifies it does not take the place of the recreation?
May I, may I chime in here, Mr. Chair? I mean, I think it's important to acknowledge that this section has already existed in the planned development requirements for a very long time and has not conflicted with any misunderstanding of the APF requirements. So definitely sensitive to your concerns here, but I think APF is a completely different chapter of the code and it, it's triggered by specific unit thresholds. And so this is really just a requirement for the planned development projects. Some of this could overlap with.
I was gonna say the APF applies to, you know, development projects too. And I just don't want anyone to come in and say, oh, this community garden acts as a recreation space and negate the need for the recreation space.
Well, it would, it would be up to this, this body as part of that APF review. So it's, I mean.
It's gonna happen. I'm just saying, we can go with it.
It would be on the development team to make that case. They felt that there was some justification there. But, you know, providing onsite recreation spaces is a legitimate way of meeting the APF.
Well, that happened with the Eastport Shopping Center. They said the rooftop pool area was gonna be adequate public facility, meet the recreation. And then we said, well, wait a minute, are people from the public gonna be able to get up there and, you know, recreate? And they said, no, absolutely not. So I can see that happening again when they're gonna say, here's this plaza and it's open space in accordance with Section 2124060. And that obviates the need for the APF requirement. I just don't want the two to get conflated and we get left. If there's a way to just say that. And I don't know the way, because it's too late for me to actually word that. But I would say something like this is not intended to supersede the APF law as it applies to planned unit development.
You wanna, you've gotta move it.
Yep, I move to add the language.
You've gotta, you've gotta.
I move, I move to add the language, right, as number four. This, how about adequate public facilities requirements are not superseded by this section?
Could be. Section four.
Yep.
Subsection four, APF.
Requirements are not superseded.
And you have to have a certain shape.
Feels the same.
I mean, personally, I don't think it's necessary, but.
Does it hurt anything?
I mean, it would be a, it would clarify perhaps, but it, I don't want to give anybody the occasion that this allows a project to skirt their responsibilities of meeting APF. I mean, this is.
Right, but especially because we're talking about community space and open space. I can see where our developer will be, will say, that's our recreation space.
Right.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on the motion to add number four as stated to Section 060? Any further discussion? All in favor of that addition, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Who?
Steven Riley.
Steve, was that opposed or were you just?
No, I said aye.
Okay. So we're, that's a 60. Okay, now we can vote on all the other change in 060, common open space.
I move to accept.
Second.
The 60.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right, now, planned development review criteria and findings. It basically renumbered, where it edits and adds the performance standards and the comment, the comprehensive plan and specifically the performance standards. And Mr. Lashinsky, would you say that, I mean, other than the language, is there, other than the adding of the performance standards and the usual compliance with the comprehensive plan, is there any other important editorial change in here? I, I haven't found any, but is there anything in here that really changes anything? Just renumber, that's basically what it did.
Yeah. There's nothing else, huh?
And then you added number eight, which is the comprehensive plan and the performance.
You know, yeah, number three, I think is, it is important because it characterizes the, these items under number three as community benefits and adds, you know, bicycle. Well, I'm sorry, that was already in there, but I think that the characterization in number three is important.
Okay. Revitalization and opportunities for public art, the modernization of stormwater management, they're all added? Yeah. They're in. Got it. Okay.
And I'm not asking for a change, but I just need some clarification. Under seven, it says forest conservation. And it does include afforestation rules, correct? Because I think it all falls under forest conservation.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It certainly does.
Yep.
All right. So all in favor of the changes to 090?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Now we go to R2NC. We did that. District. Application review to historic district approval of exterior changes? Oh, it changes the response from Department of Public Works to planning and zoning for a certificate of approval after a commission decision. Okay? Okay. Simple procedural issue. That's also 2156070. Any further discussion on that?
No.
Most to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cummings. I assume this has been worked out, Department of Public Works.
Yeah, this is a correction in the code.
If not, we're stepping into a bad part.
You're fine.
Okay, good. All in favor of that, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Six, zero. Yeah, now we move on to. Okay. Just the big mcgillup here. Thank, yes. And follow. Overlay district, historic district, height and bulk. Okay, let's move right on to 170. Height measurement. Okay? If you don't mind, I'd like to, while you guys are sort of reviewing things, I'd like to just express my opinion. Opinion. First of all, with respect to the height itself, the height stuff, I, to add the mechanical equipment and the elevator override in general, I find not objectionable because it's limited to 25% of whatever roof line there is. I was taken by Mr. Schwartz's comments that you don't need eight-foot-high accessory structure and you don't need the extra five feet for the elevator override because in today's world, you can do a two or three feet less in each of those. And that an eight-foot-high accessory structure. accessory structure, as was revealed, could be used as a bar, a bathroom, a rooftop lobby, as was expressed by the architect for the property itself, that, or one of the owners, one of the property. That gave me pause. The other thing that gave me pause is that a green roof, we all like green roof, right? But a green roof requires a flat roof, which lends itself to, guess what? And we can thank Mr. Palat for expressing the elephant in the room, rooftop dining. And I think that rooftop dining has not been very successful for anybody who lives in the historic district at the Chop Tank. I don't know if it's successful for people who live in the city. I don't know if anybody, comments I've heard, overpriced and under quality, under quality. But I think it's the issue of rooftop dining, which has really got everybody, you know, socks in a drawer. And then an interesting proposal was made that anything beyond a few feet higher for the accessory structures and elevator thing could go to a variant, okay? They'd have to prove that they need it. Otherwise, they would have to stay within, I don't know, two or three feet. Whereas I learned from Mr. Urban, every inch counts.
I thought that there was no variance.
It's what?
I, I'm asking a question. I thought that they said there were.
Are you interrupting me?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I heard that too. No, no variance in height.
Don't interrupt, Mr. Pline.
So I think that, you know, that that, I mean, it gets down to the issue of, if you want a green roof, you're basically getting a flat roof or whatever, and there's rooftop dining involved. And I just wanna pose that to everybody in this room. Personally, I don't feel like the height limits make very much of a difference. It's been confined. I would propose that the height limits be reduced from 10 feet to seven feet, which between six and eight, and that it's subject to a variance if they need more. But, and also would add that any accessory structures on the top cannot be used in any way other than to house mechanical equipment or elevator override. Which means that you're not gonna have a bar up there, follow me? Now, I don't know if rooftop dining, you know, may allow it in any case, but they'll have to go through that by, I think by way of, if I recall correctly, by way of special exception. Yeah, so that they would then have to, you know, they have to make their case for the Board of Appeals. So that's, I know I've been talking off the top of, excuse me?
He's interrupting.
Okay, well, let me then finish. So just to clarify, so we don't leave things, I know I've been talking off the top of my head, and so what I would, what I would move then is the following. That we're looking at B2. That the appurtenances and accessory structures may extend up to seven feet. And the elevator shaft overruns may extend an additional, I didn't get the impression from Schwartz that that's all that important, so I'll leave that the same. So that the appurtenances and accessory structures may extend up to seven feet.
Oh, that's down from 10.
Beyond the, excuse me?
That's down from 10?
Down from 10. And I would include any addition, any, may extend an additional five feet, comma, any additional height may be granted by variant. Once again, this is the recommendation to the council. We're not, we don't have the final word, okay? I don't know what I think about green roof. Why don't we do that first? Why don't we have a motion to amend B2, seven feet, and add the clause, any additional height may be granted by variant? Okay?
Any discussion?
I have, I have some things to.
I don't have a second yet.
Yeah, I'm waiting for a second. I'll second.
All right, what do you guys have to say?
Steven?
Well, there's so, there's, this is kind of a loaded, a loaded topic, as we all know. I think that we need to make sure that the purview of our discussion stays within the height, not in the use of the property. So I think it's really important to kind of distance ourselves from the conversation about whether it's for just industrial or maintenance facility versus a bar or a rooftop. Rest, 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 not our view. The purview is about height requirement. And I believe, Bob, with due respect, your adjustment of 10 feet, 7 feet just sounds arbitrary to me. I think that it's unfortunate that someone had some of the most sensible些建施 tonight because it made me realize that I think that we need to kind of introduce a whole new way of thinking about the height requirements of that entire city. But that's not, that's not your conversation compared to, you know, the one, I guess, application that's in front of us right now. I'm, the only thing I want to focus on is let's speak to, talk about the use of the space as compared to what's really being asked, which is a variance on the height requirement. And the only other thing I'll say, you look at the other side of Eagle Alley, H.A. is 45 feet. The Y is okay for an Eagle Alley, but it's 45 feet and we require the other side of Eagle Alley to be at 38 feet. I'm not sure where this was made. I heard Mrs. Kennedy's testimony tonight, though I have a understanding of this. Just because something was decided in 1978 doesn't mean that's what we should be doing today, nor does it mean that the decisions that were made along the way are fair. And it kind of touches on the benefit of 30% zoning rules, which is, I think, silly for a town of our size. And the reason is because we hacked that up through politics along the way to serve certain developments or things along the way. I just kinda wanna be thoughtful about the decision that we're trying to make tonight, which is really just, not about the use of the space, it's just about the height requirement. And let's look at the fairness of this, really, what's just on the other side of Eagle Alley. So for me, I would be inclined to support the height, you know, it increased for the particular project, but I would, I would see that it needs to be part of a larger discussion, shouldn't be along the lines of what Jay Schwartz was suggesting for the city, which I think is in the best interest of the city. Now, and I'll just, one other thing, I've heard a lot of comments about, maybe it's Chop Tank or some other things, you know, the downsides of Chop Tank has been discussed, but the upsides of Chop Tank is, people like the fact that it's finally up there, it's on the water, and you can go and have a meet me, you can invite your colleagues to have a drink, you can actually explore and enjoy the city and the water from while you're dining. That just hasn't really existed in town. So I kind of support generally any type of development that's gonna bring more people to and support the comprehensive plan and also support what we're trying to do with the new park and the development of the city in general. So, you know, I'm willing to support this particular application, but I'm just kind of leaning away and looking at what they're actually gonna do with this because I don't feel like that's in my purview. So it's just, that's my comment, just kind of throw that up there for further discussion.
You're pline?
Yeah, so just start out with saying that, that I appreciate Mr. Phil.
Are you muted?
You're muted.
I'm sorry.
Or you're, or you're not?
No, I'm not muted.
Now, now we can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay. So I appreciate Mr. Phil's standard, to be completely honest with you, that he really just pointed out that even Congress, we all know this in the room. But I guess what really sort of bugs me about this is the way I read it, that this is the end goal and all of this stuff is sort of written to sort of present that end goal. Not, you know, not, not written necessarily, it ended up in South Texas. I may be wrong here, this is how I read it, that it was, this was written, you know, with that end goal in mind. And, you know, given that this is just one location and I meant for those multiple property owners and properties, it just seemed, it just doesn't smell right to me. You know, the issue of what should the height be there versus other places like Mr. Rada mentioned? I think that's a worthy discussion, you know, have we, should the city, instead of reevaluate that, given where we are now versus where we were 40 years ago? I don't, that's a good question. I don't, I don't really know. But I, it's just, it's just, what's here is just really bothering me. Okay. And so I don't, I don't know what way to go, but I think it's really bothering me. So, so that it could not be used for like an elevator, a rooftop elevator lob or a, or a serving kitchen or, you know, if they're gonna do rooftop dining and that's what they need it for, then they should come out at the time, at the appropriate time into the appropriate place. But otherwise, they're claiming that it's just for maintenance use, for mechanical use? Well, fine. Let's make it just for mechanical use, but if you wanna come in later and you've got, and you wanna deal with the whole thing, they can come in as, with a variant, okay? It's, I'm just, I know I'm placing another step in the road for anybody, but call it like it is.
I would ask the question that I started to ask earlier. I think we heard that there are no variances allowed to increase the height, so the whole premise of your motion goes away.
If what?
The whole premise of your motion disappears if there's no ability to get a variance to increase the height in the historic district in this particular zone. That's what I was asking when you were going on about that, so I could clarify that. But I was cutting you off, so I didn't get it.
Yeah, there are no variance.
Not, not at that location, no.
Not for height. Not, not for height.
So that's why, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I was saying we were going into that when we came in. I also thought that Jay Schwartz, his comments were very good, and I think the other public comments were very good as well. I, I do think that the definition of accessory structure wording could probably be clarified pretty easily, probably the green roof definition could be done better. I just feel like what he was saying is that several times, there are a lot of holes in this. And I feel like it would be not that hard if we're getting together again on June 29th, or not the 29th, the 27th, another day, to just work out those definitions, so we don't feel like we have so many holes. Those are some of my comments. I also think, have some comments about the height, but.
I think accessory structures are defined someplace.
Yes, there's a definition in zoning code for accessory structures.
Okay, yeah, I guess it wasn't clear what they were and we didn't go over them in our discussion earlier, maybe we should, we could do that now.
Yeah, I mean, they vary depending on what the use is, but, you know, an accessory to a gas station is a lot different than an accessory to a single-family house.
Would a bar be accessory to a mechanical room?
A bar could be accessory to a hotel.
Right.
Yeah, mechanical room, I guess presumably it could be an accessory structure, but it's not really, it's so integrally required for a hotel or a building that it's not really a necessary use per se, it's just part of the use.
Is there any ambiguity in accessory use, accessory structures? In accessory to a hotel?
No, not at all. There, there are uses that are accessory and that are clearly incidental and secondary in nature to the principal use, which is a hotel, or a, whatever the principal use is. And so an accessory is just that. It varies depending on what the use is. And you, an applicant can make a claim of, for what they want to do, and if it's found to be accessory, minor, incidental, secondary in importance, it could be allowed.
I have.
No, go ahead.
I have a question. You, you've said that a green roof must be installed. What percentage of the roof area is, is, has to be green? Five percent? Seventy-five percent?
You really can't say that now. It depends on the stormwater issues at stake. It depends on the, the depth of the median, it's, it depends on the design solution. It's, it's, it's hard to say. It's hard to specify in a zoning code what that ought to be as well. I will say this, which is very important for us all to understand. A hotel in this zoning district is a special exception. That's not changing. The, a special exception is a use that has to go to the Board of Appeals and special exception standards have to be applied and administered, and they are all about impact and use. So these issues would be worked out in the context of a public hearing and the applicant would have to demonstrate that the project complies with the special exception standards before they even get us a site development plan worthy of presenting to you. So then, that's the second public hearing, a planning commission review of a major site design plan. And then lastly, the HPC would review it for conformance with the historic district and compatibility and context and apply the guidelines. And these guidelines generally don't favor rooftop decks, without question. There are, however, rooftop decks that the HPC has approved within the city of Annapolis. So they look at them with a great deal of concern. Sometimes they approve them, other times not. None of that changes. That, this code changes some numbers and allowances, but it doesn't alter the decision-making process and the procedures that currently attend to development in this zone.
Thank you. I wasn't aware of all of that, the net levels of the review. I will withdraw my motion to go from 10 to 7. Okay? All right? Do I hear a motion to approve? B.
So moved.
Any further discussion?
We don't have a second.
Oh, I don't have a second, sorry. Motion to approve all B.
So moved.
I will second it.
There you go.
Any further discussion on this? Repeat this? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Five, two, one.
Sorry.
So, excuse me? Is it, excuse me?
I voted aye.
Four to two.
Can I, can you respeak the, what we're voting on? You cut out my audio here.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll go back a half a step. This is section 2156-170, if you're looking at the code. Height measurement, okay? In the historic district. Page 11 of the 12, very top. Okay? And it's all of B as proposed in the legislation. Okay?
And the motion was to accept all B.
Yes.
I'm going to vote aye.
It's now three to three? Okay, doesn't pass. Okay. There is nothing else for us to look at under 014, and we have no other, no other business to conduct, and it is now 10 minutes after 11. Is there anything that anybody wants to say? Now, there's one thing we do need to do. We have passed an enormous amount tonight, and we need to meet again to approve the findings, which I will write, hoping to reflect the discussion tonight. And it needs, it'll have to be virtually, okay? I'll do my best. I, if, will the July, whatever, we're meeting in July, the first Thursday in July, would oh, because of the July 4th, July 4th comes on a Thursday.
Friday.
Okay, so it'd be July 10th.
Yep.
Okay. Do we do we need to get this into you as quickly as we can?
Yeah, yes, as quickly as you can.
Okay, do we need to advertise a meeting solely in order to approve finding?
I think so.
Okay, what I'm going to suggest is that we move to continue this meeting until the next scheduled meeting, which will be virtual, and, and that will be publicized as best we can. It'll solely be to review and deal with the findings. Except edit, yeah, okay? Won't, there won't be anything else. Nothing else on the agenda. Well, we don't have a date.
We don't have a date, and...
And we, what? Hold on. Miss... Okay, what's the... Okay, what's the Thursday?
The 19th. June 19th, and that the city offices are closed for June 19th, Juneteenth. So it's not a date that's available to us.
Yep.
I believe that you can convey your recommendations to the planning commission if you decide as a group tonight that the specific votes that you've made tonight can be conveyed to the planning commission as your recommendations. You could follow up with a further clarification if you'd like, but you were very clear about your, your recommendations.
All right, let me ask if everybody's comfortable with sort of a hybrid process. Do we allow the director to convey what we did tonight on a formal basis, and we might follow it up later with some comments, especially with respect to transit work and development, and what we thought about certain aspects of this legislation as it goes before committee? More formal, so both an informal relay and a more formal one?
Well, alternatively, is it, is it, is it right to those findings, to all of them? We do, you know, essentially instead of a mail vote, or I don't know what the... But we could all agree that the findings are fine?
Well, I would like to, but I think that we've run...
We're not asking for public comment. If you write them, we all agree on them.
Well, there's no, it's not a hearing. Right, it's totally administrative decision. Well, I'll leave that question open, and I will ask Ms. Woods. I'll ask, I'll ask our counsel.
Just to approve the minutes.
I've agreed, I, I agree with you. It's always been thorn in my side to do that, but I don't, I have, we have to comply with the Open Meetings Act, and I will ask our outside counsel to give me an opinion. In the meantime, are we comfortable, and I'll do this by way of a motion, that we allow the director to deliver our formal decisions tonight? I'm good. Yep. Okay. So, second. Mr. Cummings, a second. Any discussion on that? And then we'll follow it up at some future time with the, we'll see what we do with the findings. But in the meantime, any further, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Do I hear a motion to adjourn at 11:15 at night?
So moved.
All right. How about a discussion on that motion?
No.
All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for the hard work this evening.
Thanks for doing remotely.